The show on the road. Let me bring up the, uh, let me bring up the thing. Cheat sheet here.
So in the, in the, I don't, in the minutes, by the way, it, it changes it, but it's inconsistent.
Oh, really?
The resolution itself.
You want to bring it up?
Yeah, in the minutes, it says fourteen feet from the sidewalk. There was, it, then it says down low fourteen feet from the curb.
Okay.
Down low, it's right, but in the top, it's fourteen point five from the face of the curb.
Yeah.
That's right.
That's what we approved, right?
Fourteen feet off the base of the sidewalk. It was the curb.
Yeah. All right. Bring that up when we do the red, or, uh, is that in the minutes or the resolution?
It's in the minutes.
Okay. I didn't either.
I don't think it's, it's not. Listen, thank you for being on top of that. I was like, oh.
Uh, I have it.
Which, which case was it? What's the case number? There's one.
Three, two.
Three, two, P. Okay, you got it. Three to locate fourteen point five from the face of the curb.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Approximately five point five from the sidewalk.
You gonna bring it up?
In the minutes, I'll bring it up.
Okay.
Just to note in minutes, just make sure. Five P is the minimum side you are, other side you are.
Suzanne, are we rolling? Okay. Let's call a meeting to order here. This is the May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Haddon Heights Planning Board. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Sunshine Laws of the State of New Jersey, Chapter one forty-five, by mayor and council on the planning board for official notices. Notice of this meeting was posted on the Borough Bulletin Board and the Borough's website for that purpose. Uh, attendance, Suzanne, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Bonnacursi. Mr. Madden.
Here.
Chairman Hansen.
Here.
Mayor Houck. Councilwoman Herron. Mr. Famular.
Here.
Mr. Shannon. Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Christie. Ms. Borcher.
We have a quorum, uh, everyone standing to the flag, please. I would like to leave him to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, we've got some administrative business this evening before we get on to our caseload. We have a pretty full agenda. We'll try to move along as quickly as we can. First thing is approval of the, uh, minutes of our April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. So everybody had a chance to review the minutes? I know Mike had a comment regarding, uh, the Verespi case.
Yeah, the only issue, it, it's just inconsistent. The, the top of it says change of fence location, fourteen point five feet off the base of the sidewalk. Down below, it correctly states fourteen point five feet from the face of the curb. And I think the resolution correctly states fourteen point five feet from the face of the curb. I think that's what we, we agreed upon or what it was proposed. Um, just wanted to note that discrepancy. Other than that, we're fine.
Being that, and unless anybody else has any comments or questions, uh, with that amendment, would anybody like to make a motion to, uh, approve the resolution with the revision as noted? Or the minutes, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Uh, Jennifer? Anybody else that wasn't here would, seeing obviously, Kate, Ryan, Jennifer, Mayor Houck? I believe everybody else was here. Michael, were you here last month?
I was.
Okay, so Michael will have to abstain as well.
No, I was here.
Oh, you were here, yeah, I thought so. Okay. I thought you said you weren't, sorry. Okay, uh, next item, uh, we have two resolutions from the cases that we approved last month. Kate, first one's case number twenty-five dash three dash two P, Steven Verespi, eleven oh one, Sycamore Street, block sixty-nine, lot thirty-two. Uh, has everybody that voted, voted on the case had a chance to review the resolution? Any questions or comments? Uh, seeing none, uh, entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make, make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call Suzanne.
Chairman Hansen?
Yes.
Mr. Famular?
Yes.
Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Motion passes. Uh, second resolution is case number twenty-five dash three dash three P, Terrence Tracy, Jr., four twenty-three Bradshaw Avenue, block four, lot one point zero nine. Uh, has everybody that voted on the case had a chance to review the resolution? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, uh, entertain a motion to approve the resolution as written.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call Suzanne.
Chairman Hansen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herron? Mr. Famular?
Yes.
Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips? Oops, sorry. Um, Mr. Christie?
Motion passes. Uh, last administrative business we have before we get to our caseload, uh, we'll open the meeting for public comment right now for any matters that aren't related to any of the cases this evening. So if you want to come forward and talk about anything that isn't related to one of the specific cases this evening, uh, now would be the time. Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting. We'll move on to new business. Uh, first case this evening is, uh, case number twenty-five dash five dash one P, and that's James Donnelly, nine oh five Station Avenue, block forty-five, lot twenty-eight, and it's a use duplex certification. Mr. Donnelly, we'll have our board solicitor swear again. We'll also have, uh, solicitor swearing, our, uh, planner and engineer, Mr. Bach. Uh, Mr. Madden and.
No, no, not me.
Oh, Mr. Houck and, uh, Councilwoman Herron are recusing themselves because this is a use variance case. They can't vote on it.
Hey, Mr. Donnelly, can you raise your right hand? Um, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Want to tell us about your proposal?
All right, I didn't know if you were going. Hi, my name is Jim Donnelly. I'm a lifelong resident of Haddon Heights. I'm here this evening with my wife, Maureen, and my children, Grace and Aiden. Uh, come before the board as a buyer of the property at nine oh five Station Ave, uh, looking for a duplex certification and a use variance. If I could just read one thing. Two separate, but very related applications, both rooted in a clear goal to make this a hundred percent residential, more compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and in better alignment with the Borough's R-two zone. Looking to convert, like I said, the mixed-use building, medical office, uh, legal non-conforming use, and two residential units into a three-family dwelling. Right? They've been continuously occupied since the late sixties. My goal is to legitimize what has been functionally here for many years. Also here this evening is Dr. Levin, the owner, who will be providing testimony on the historical. Uh, the property at nine oh five Station Ave has historically been listed as an office space with two apartments. Upon reviewing records from the, both the Borough and the Haddon Heights Library, I've encountered some discrepancies. A tax assessment sheet received from the Borough notes that it's a medical office and two apartments. However, the Borough currently lists the property as having two units, one medical office and one apartment. The property has separate entrances for each of the units, uh, including the medical office in each apartment, with fully independent kitchens, bathrooms, living areas, and electrical meters. Presently, there's three separate leases. This, uh, application seeks recognition of longstanding residential use of the two apartments. Uh, the duplex certification would align with the property's functional use, which has been in place for over fifty-five years. You know, I'm not the owner of the property, but I've researched it the best I could. You know, uh, like to thank Kelly Sanusu and, and the librarian, Chris, for providing valuable information to me and, and certainly to Suzanne for her help, uh, just to get here this evening. Dr. Levin, the current owner, made himself available to provide some crucial testimony regarding the property's historical use, that this property has been a medical office with two apartments since prior to the time that the ordinance was amended in December of seventy-three. Uh, just wanted to just then say, uh, this application is a straightforward request to reg, officially recognize this historical and ongoing residential use of the two apartments. Uh, you know, I'm looking to purchase this property and, uh, I'm, you know, hoping that, you know, the board will see favorable. Thank you.
Would it be appropriate to, uh, go through Steve's letter at this point, do you think? Oh, we don't, you don't have one?
Yes. Yes, so he has a variance, so I think it's, I think it's not really, it's, it's really an application for a use variance and also, uh, uh, it could be all bundled in a use variance, uh, because the applicant is requesting for the commercial use to be a residential use, which would result in a triplex.
Yes.
So, um, are you looking, are you looking first to get a certification of the commercial and the two apartments, or would you?
However, however, I, you know, I was told that, so it was going to be.
I was wondering the same thing.
I think it's, I think it's, I thought it was a combined application. That's how it was initially submitted.
I, I think it should be bifurcated first. I think you should, uh.
Certify the duplex with the medical office and then if he wants to add the third apartment, it should.
And that should be a.
So it's a use variance application.
That's what we've discussed previously.
And if, and if we decide that it's not a pre-existing non-conforming use, the dup, the two residential units, then he could combine that into the use variance application at that point, right? Okay, that's what I was thinking too. Okay.
So I have nothing further to add. The applicant has already put on the testimony in terms of, uh, his proofs for why it should be, uh, considered a pre-existing non-conforming two apartments with the medical office on the first floor. And I look for any questions from the board on that.
We're gonna do the certific, the duplex certification. That's how you want to proceed, Mr. Donnelly?
That's how I was told we were going to proceed. How, how, I'll proceed however you think is best.
Your call, how you want to go. You want to confirm the.
I personally wanted to go with the use variance first, but, you know.
Well, the use variance may change depending on the certification process, so I think it'd be.
So let me explain, if, if, if we go forward with a use variance and then it, say, was denied, then you would still only be left with one residential unit at that point, and you would have to get the duplex certification. So if we certify that the two residential units pre-existed the zoning code continuously without being abandoned, then even if you didn't get approved in the use variance process for the third residential unit, for the conversion of the medical office to a residential unit, then you would still have, assuming that we certify the duplex, then you would still be allowed to have two units residential. So I don't want to tell you how to proceed, but that might be.
Sounds good. This duplex certification.
And then I think it'd be appropriate, uh, Mr. Donnelly, you indicated that the doctor was here.
He is.
By testimony in regards to, uh, uh, why this, uh, uh, is a triplex, two residential units and, uh, the commercial doctors office.
That's right.
So you want to bring up, bring up any of your.
Yeah, it might be, if we, if we have somebody that can confirm that use prior to the, or close to prior to the existence of the zoning code, that should be a pretty straightforward matter, I would believe. I didn't realize we had another. Yeah, that should be. That'd make our lives a lot easier.
You have a seat, sir.
Okay, we'll have our solicitor swearing, whoever's gonna speak on the matter.
Okay, please raise your right hand. Anyone who's gonna provide testimony, raise your right hand. I swear.
I'm the attorney.
Oh, sorry, I, okay. Um, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Good. Uh, Dr. Levin, um, when, when did you first become familiar with the property at nine oh five Station Ave?
When I was still a student, which was approximately in nineteen sixty-nine.
And, uh, what brought you to the property? What did you see?
Well, we lived in Haddon Heights in an apartment on the White Horse Pike, and I was even aware before then that there was a Dr. Bendy who practiced in Haddon Heights. Um, and it's the, uh, habit of students to try to shadow, uh, members of the profession, during their education, because it gives you a, a clinical reference that you don't necessarily get, um, the scholastic school level. So it introduces you to actual patients and people who are having, uh, conditions that are treated, and it's a very, an, an interesting process. And so I was told that, uh, Dr. Bendy had a very busy practice in Haddon Heights, and I made it my business to contact him, and I was able to, to shadow him.
And, uh, how was this property used when you, when you, when you first visited it back in nineteen sixty-nine?
It was an office and two apartments.
And, uh, as far as you know, has it remained that way to this very day?
Yes.
And, um, did it come a time when, uh, Dr. Bendy, Bendy passed away and you purchased the, the building?
Yes, he, um, was involved in a tragic, uh, we'll call it an accident, and succumbed to that, and I was contacted by the then mayor of the town, uh, Doc, Mr. Joseph McCullough. He knew that I was a young at the time, uh, new practitioner, and he said, you might be interested in this practice. I know you're familiar with it because you visited it, and he said it's also, uh, a benefit because in addition to the office, there are two apartments that can provide some income. And so he, uh, contacted me and I was interested in it, and that's how it, that's how it happened.
And did you and your wife, Mrs. Lynn Levin, who's here this, uh, this evening too, purchase the property on or about May twenty-five, nineteen seventy-seven?
Yes.
And what was the condition of the property at that time?
It was an office and two apartments.
Has it remained that way ever since?
Yes.
Any changes?
No.
And are you under contract to sell the property to Mr. Donnelly?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, as far as you know, uh, is, has the Borough indicated that your, your building is allowed to be a professional office and two apartments?
Yes, to my knowledge.
And there was a, an indication on the Haddon Heights, uh, friendly community note that the commercial use is also, uh, acknowledged by the Borough?
Yes.
Do you think this would be a benefit to the town?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Do you see any way that, uh, this would be harmful to the town?
I can't imagine.
Anything further from the board?
Anybody have any questions?
I, I do have one question.
Dr. Bendy?
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Levin, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, while we have, uh, Ms. Lu, uh, Dr. Levin here, uh, there was a question that came up in our review letter, and you're familiar with our review letter.
Haven't seen it, but go ahead.
So review letter was dated May eighth, twenty twenty-five. One of the photos in the review letter was the side of wooden deck, which the Borough does not have any record of, uh, any permits for it. It does not appear that that predated, uh, the zoning ordinance. Do you have any idea when that deck was installed?
The deck was always there. I mean, from the very first time I saw the, the, uh, building, um, it's been undergone several repairs over time, but the deck was, uh, was always in existence.
Any, any changes in dimensions?
Not to my knowledge. So if so, maybe infinitesimal, but not that I know.
And, uh, did you have a contractor to do the work?
Yes.
As far as you know, were there permits?
Yes.
So the deck, the deck, you're aware of the deck being in existence, uh, in nineteen seventy-seven when you bought the property?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And was it, uh, there even before you bought the property?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Think it's appropriate to open up for questions from the board for, uh, Dr. Levin at this point? Pretty clear, you, you're, it's pretty clear from your testimony that the two residential units, as you testified, existed before our zoning code, uh, changed and outlawed, uh.
Yes.
Multifamily in the R-two zone.
Yes.
We, we have this, Lynn Levin here, who can also testify. She actually taught at night.
I personally think Dr. Levin's, uh, testimony is sufficient, but, uh, I'd defer to the board on that, so.
We will, we will retire and sit down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, I thought it's not Rob Gleaner.
Who's the, who's the attorney?
No, Steve?
And actually, uh, sir? Council, could you put your appearance on the record? You're not Mr. Gleaner.
I know you're not Mr. Glean, that's why we were talking, I know you're not Mr. Gleaner. You're much better looking than Mr. Gleaner.
My name is Barry, I'm W E N D T, I've been an attorney since nineteen seventy-one. I'm certified as a civil trial attorney, and my office has been in Haddon Heights for probably fifteen or twenty years.
Oh, we needed his name, sir. All right, very good, thank you.
Yes. Okay, um. I will, yeah. Uh, we'll open this matter to the public at this point, if anybody wants to come forward from the public to speak on the, we're just talking about the duplex certification at this point. Nobody from the public wants to come forward? Come forward, we'll have the solicitor swear you in. Yeah.
On this, on this, yeah.
This is on the duplex certification, not the conversion of the office to the third residential unit at this point. We're only talking about, we're only talking about certifying that the two apartments.
Well, yeah, this is, this, the certification that it is a triplex, two apartments and a commercial, uh, professional office used on the first floor. That's what they're, uh, that's what the matter before is.
We're gonna talk about the conversion of the third unit coming up, so there'll be more public comment on that at that point. Sorry, it's a little bit, I'm confused too. So anybody, anybody want to talk about the duplex certification? Triplex certification with two residential units, I should say, to be correct. Uh, seeing them, bring it back to the board for a possible motion on the, uh, certificate, on the pre-existing use certification.
I can.
Let's do that.
So for the benefit of the board, um, and also the public, uh, we are discussing, um, certifying a duplex, which is a, um, non-conforming use. Pursuant to forty fifty-five D S sixty-eight, non-performing uses may be continued upon the law or in the structure so occupied, and any such structure that may be restored or repaired in the event of partial destruction. Um, a non-performing use is a user activity which was law-acquired to the adoption, provision or amendment of a zoning ordinance, but which fails to conform to the amendment. A reminder that, um, in order to deem that this would not be, um, a continuing non-performing use, there has to be an overact or failure, um, to act, which implies that the owner neither claims nor denies any interest in continuing the non-conforming use, um, and there must be an intent to abandon. Um, we heard testimony tonight, um, from the current owner of the property, that, um, he had purchased the property, I believe, in nineteen seventy-seven, and at that point in time, um, it was two residential units and a doctor's unit, um, in the front parcel. Um, he has an intent to, um, sell the property to the applicant, Mr. Donnelly. Um, I did want, before we continue, I had two points, um, of clarification, I guess, or questions. One, um, that there are taxes existing, um, and that would be a condition of approval from the board. And then the second would be that I just wanted to confirm on your application that the signature of the owner, um, that would authorize this application was Dr. Levin's, just because it was a little bit hard to read?
Yes, it was.
I figured it was, okay. Um, so that's, that's it for me.
Thanks, Elena. Does anybody want to make a motion, or are there any questions or comments about, uh, what we're voting on?
I will make a motion to approve. The property as a triplex, two residential units and a commercial unit at this time.
Anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Roll call Suzanne.
Ms. Bonnacursi?
Yes.
Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Chairman Hansen?
Although, yes, it's clear that it is pre-existing in the zoning code based on Dr. Levin's testimony. Um, thank, thanks for coming in and making our, some of these get crazy when we don't have any firsthand accounts, so made our job a lot easier tonight, so I thank you.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Famular?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
And Ms. Borcher?
Yes.
Motion passes, so now we'll move on to the use variance aspect of the application. So do you want to tell us about your plans for, uh, converting, proposing to convert the medical office to a third residential unit now?
So, as I mentioned before, the goal is, both applications, or in specifically this one, was to align the property more closely with the intent of the R-two district by eliminating the medical office, preserving the building's residential character while preserving the character integrity of the neighborhood. Once again, I'm looking to eliminate the commercial component of the property, making the use more consistent with the residential zoning. I can go through the positive and negative criteria. So positive criteria is special reasons under the municipal land use statute. I want to acknowledge first, I'm not a professional planner, but will be providing my opinion as to the application in regard to the positive and negative criteria, which is required under municipal land use. A variance of, of use may be granted when special reasons exist, applying reasons support the application. Particularly suitable site, the building already contains two residential units. Converting the office to a third unit aligns the existing residential nature of the neighborhood. It's promoting smart growth and adaptive reuse. It repurposes an existing structure rather than allowing potential vacancy. It reduces non-conforming commercial uses in a residential area and encourages sustainable low-impact development. Expanding housing availability, it adds to the Borough's housing stock. It supports diversity in housing options for young professionals, retirees, or growing families like mine. It responds to modern housing needs without new construction and advances the general welfare. It promotes the general welfare by aligning land use with residential zoning, reducing incompatibility. It complies with the purpose A and E of the municipal land use, general welfare, and efficient land use. And also on the redevelopment and historic preservation, the building will be preserved and maintained, helps to restore and maintain the residential character of the block and local, uh, in the community and benefits, uh, smarts local, local businesses with increased foot traffic, enhances neighborhood stability with more residents, potentially for affordable housing, especially for extended families and new residents. And on the negative criteria, no substantial detriment to the public good. It replaces a non-conforming or, or commercial use with a residential use more compatible with the neighborhood. It reduces traffic and parking demand compared to keeping the medical office. Not sure if you've driven by there sometimes during the day. It could get pretty busy at ninth and station. No vis, physical changes to the building or exterior proof, appearance, uh, no substantial impairment of the zone plan or ordinance. R-two zone goals are better served by a triplex than a mixed-use building. It aligns with the Borough's master plan, which emphasizes preserving residential character, removing non-conforming commercial uses, and promoting appropriate housing density. This proposal will not create a harmful precedent. It reflects a case-specific site-appropriate adjustment. And I look for any questions the board may have.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Refer the board to our May eighth, twenty twenty-five review. We indicated what the, uh, uh, application materials that were submitted. The applicant, uh, is requesting a D-one use variance, who would expand the existing multifamily housing with the R-two district. The applicant has provided testimony. Uh, just have a few questions. I have in my notes in the application materials, um, that, uh, you have an existing onsite parking, uh, driveway, asphalt driveway, that extends, uh, partially to the rear of the property?
Correct.
Uh, and these are your, these are your, what are your application materials?
That's what I had in there. Yeah, so I do want to speak on that, if that's okay. First, when I researched the property, I realized it was fifteen hundred square feet, the, the building footprint, and then looking at the existing driveway to the back of the building is, uh, uh, I forget the square foot, but combined, it's under twenty-two hundred, or twenty, twenty-two hundred square feet. I believe the, the zoning ordinance is, is third, uh, one-third or thirty percent coverage?
Thirty percent for coverage.
So right now, even to the back of the building, I believe I'm at twenty percent. So, you know, I'm not sure what I'm do, right, I'm still the buyer. I'm still not sure what I'm doing going forward. I know, I was hoping to, you know, really address that if I exceed the thirty percent to come back.
I'm going to ask you a few questions that might help. So, you're proposing three residential units. Our ordinance requirement and typically residential site improvement standards is two parking spaces per unit. So, you would have to have six onsite parking spaces, because overnight parking is prohibited within the borough.
Yep.
So, in your application materials that you indicated that you would tend to remove the deck, and then to extend the parking, is the extent, the driveway, is your intention to extend the driveway sufficient that you would have six off-seat, off-street parking spaces?
And that's what I'm looking at, because there's, I could, there's a tandem parking and there's an angled parking. I don't have the exact answer yet, but I
But again, this is not for site plan, and this is not for anything else.
Yep.
But just as part of the use variance testimony.
Okay.
Will you be able to provide six off-street parking spaces?
I will be able to provide it, yes.
Thank you. And you already indicated in your application materials that you were going to remove the deck to be able to extend.
I would have to do that.
You would have to do that because you couldn't extend and park underneath that deck. The, you also indicated that you would, again, the material may not be, you indicated stone, but there may be a requirement that it must be a paved surface. But that would be something that you would work out under a grading plan application?
Yes.
All right. And you understand that anything over five hundred square feet, you are required to do a grading, grading plan application to the borough?
Okay.
And most likely, this would be that, so it is the, if it's successful, if Mr. Donnelly is successful this evening, that if it's over five hundred square feet, a disturbance that he must submit for a grading plan approval.
And then would that approval be part of the building permit application when I go?
That is, that is a prerequisite to building permit.
Yep. Yep, it's not coming from the board.
And if you are complying in all other aspects of your bulk standards, meaning block coverage, setbacks, if they're all existing, then you would not have to appear before the board.
Got it. Thank you.
Can you tell us about any other proposed improvements?
A lot of, yep, a lot of improvements, right? It's, it's, it's not in a historic district, but it's got a lot of historic characteristics. Right off the bat, I, you know, there's a lot of trees that have to come down. Some of the trees are intruding on the neighbor's property, even damaging some of the shingles on the roof. So, I want to start with the exterior of the building, clean it up, and new windows. Certainly then get inside to do a full gut of the office. But the first building permit will probably be electrical for knob and tube replacement. And as far as the apartments, probably the second floor, I won't be doing very much at this time, nor the rear apartment at this time, but concentrate them on the outside, and then, and then renovate the office, the residential.
No street trees along the curb strip will be removed. And trash recycling, where is it intended that the, you would have your trash?
So, it's obviously in the rear, you know, I purchased a property similar like this years ago on Seven-Eleven Station Ave, where I was required to put a, like a corral, you know, fencing, and then I think I put some landscaping around it, so I'll make sure whatever I do looks aesthetically pleasing.
So, you have a centralized trash recycling area in the rear
Yes.
of the property, and your intention is to screen it in some manner, whether it's landscaping and/or fencing?
Correct.
Does, does sound like, based on the testimony and having to put parking in the rear and do these things, that we're probably looking at a future site plan for these improvements?
Most likely not.
No?
Most likely not, because it wouldn't, the improvements, they're really just, we want to know where the trash cans recycling are going, and all the improvements really would be, at least as presented right here, is only intended to just extend the driveway.
Okay.
With no other changes to the footprint. So, I don't believe it would, it would reach the level of murdering a minor site plan.
Okay. Just trying to figure out how we're, how we would.
All right. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to change, I'm going to change.
Go ahead.
I'm going to change, I'm going to change that. It's actually in my letter, and I'm a little embarrassed, in my letter, that the proposed improvements would require a site plan.
So, I have to
A minor site plan.
Right, so, once again, I'm not, I'm not intruding on the bulk requirements whatsoever right now, right? So.
Because you don't, you don't know what the nature of the
I don't, I'm still the buyer. I'm going to meet all the building codes, you know.
I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to follow up with it. If he gains approval, how we would follow up.
And because it is a use variance, I would suggest admitting any factor if they show the improvements as testified here this evening, and a minor site plan to the board, and then the board could be comfortable that everything put on the record here this evening would occur. So, actually, I corrected myself. I actually have in my review, as applicant is proposing improvements to the property, we would recommend a minor site plan with all waivers. That would be appropriate. So, it could be, in essence, your grading plan that you're submitting with simple zoning would be the minor site plan. But that would have to be as conditioned to the board.
I just want to make sure somebody's going to have a chance to review, basically.
And be on the record going forward.
Sorry.
Is that something I need to come in front of the board again for?
You would have to submit it to the board, yes.
So, I have to come up here?
Yes.
Next month?
Not, well, whenever you get the application in.
You got it.
Okay.
But as long as, I'm, I'm going to suggest that if you're successful with the use variance this evening, and it's everything that you represented on the record, it should be, it should be pretty straightforward in terms of minor site plan application. But also, this would provide the opportunity to make sure that the impermeable coverage is under the thirty percent USC indicated, and also take a look at how the parking and the trash would be.
It's not going to stop him from work while he's putting all that together, from working on the interior and clearing the trees and that kind of, it's not going to stop you from doing that kind of stuff.
But the minor site plan should be in place and approved prior to CO for the
Of course.
for the third potential residential unit if they're successful.
You got it. Sounds good.
That's all I have, and that was all the questions I had.
Thank you.
Bring it to the board for questions and comments. The only thing I grapple with, with your, with the positive criteria is you refer to maintaining the residential character of the neighborhood and the intent of the master plan, but I don't know how, how true that is in the R-two zone, because we specifically don't permit multifamily, so I don't know if that can be used as a point in favor of the positive criteria, that's all.
Understood. You know, I, I, I did notice when I researched multifamilies, close to eighty percent of the multifamily homes are between Winters Pike and Tenth Avenue. There's a hundred and twenty-eight duplexes in town, ten triplexes. There's a triplex right up the street on, on Ninth Avenue. So, there, you know, they are in the neighborhood. I know they're probably grandfathered in or whatnot, but you'd be surprised how many there are.
There's a lot.
Until you see the pound of box, two pound of boxes or three pound of boxes, it's quite a bit. But thank you for your comment.
Anybody else want to comment, questions about the application?
Mr. Donnelly, I'll, one, I want to thank you for the history and the thoroughness of your application.
Thank you.
You know, you gave us, especially with duplex certification first, and obviously bringing the doctor to testify, it made it easy. And then also giving the history here. I, I personally always wondered how that was a doctor's office between all these residential houses, and, I mean, I haven't been here as long as you, but it always was. So, I understand where you're going with the positive criteria about bringing, bringing back the residential character of the neighborhood, so to speak. The questions, and I think Mr. Baca obviously did a very good job. He asked a lot of the questions I had, but just to confirm from a parking standpoint, that was like my thought process in terms of, the doctor's office does have a ton of, there's a lot of parking out there all day long, but obviously at nighttime, there isn't any, there aren't any cars out there. So, your intention is to clean up the back of that property and to basically, and you'll be back, but to basically put a parking lot back there so that you can have six cars back there. Super.
I would make sure we meet the requirements. I don't, you know, hate to call it a parking lot. I remember installing a parking lot at Seven-Eleven Station Ave, and there was a lot, because there was, there was overhead lighting and things like that, but certainly meet the requirements where there will be no on-street parking, you know, at, you know, after hours, but yes, I will.
And then, and then, again, Steve addressed this, but the footprint of the property itself, that you're going to do the renovations are basically to the outside of it and to the inside of it, but the footprint is essentially staying the same, correct? Other than the decking.
It is.
Okay.
No addition or anything like that, other than that, that, just the parking.
Okay.
The other thing I would add with regard to the parking is that if you looked at our ordinance requirements, I don't have the doctor's office requirements right in front of me, but I would imagine that it's a de-intensification, it'll be a much, it would be a less intense parking demand going from medical to residential.
I absolutely agree, especially during the day, but our overnight parking restriction of on-street parking overnight, so they would have to be able to provide, each individual apartment unit would have to be able to get in and out of the parking facility, so this is not something where you could just stack six cars in a row in the driveway. They're going to be able, have to independently get in and out of the access drive. And that's something that'll be resolved during site plan. One other clarification, even though the footprint is not going to change, my assumption is that since you're taking off the deck and the stair that is, in essence, at the end of the existing driveway, you will be doing an exterior stair to the existing unit.
I have.
And replace. So, that will come down, but there will be a new stair to the existing residential unit.
That's right, to the second floor.
But it would be appropriate, and Mike just had a good question, it would be more appropriate to deal with the, any landscaping improvements during a site plan aspect?
Absolutely.
Okay. Lighting too, I'm sure.
Lighting and also all that stuff can be handled during any minor site plan application.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. Donnelly? I said, at this point, we'll open the application up to the public for comments on the converge, on the use variance aspect of the application.
I just wanted to say.
We'll have, we'll have the solicitor swear you in.
Put your name for the record, and I'll swear you in.
Okay, my name is Sally Knapp.
All right, Sally, can you raise your right hand if you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is truthful, true, and lawful, and binding?
Yes. I live closest, I live right up the block from this building, and I actually just want to say I lived next door to a triplex for the last thirty years, and the owner lives there, and the owner's done a fantastic job. You would not even know if you drove down Ninth Avenue that it is a triplex. It's been a great experience, and if they can clean up this and make it the same way, I think it's a positive. I have nothing but good things to say about my neighbors next door.
I would, I would hope that having a lifelong resident take it over, that standard of care would apply.
Be the same.
It's not going to be somebody from four hours away that's an absentee landlord. I would, I would,
Absolutely.
Doesn't seem that, like that would be the situation, but.
So, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. It's always, it's always nice to hear from the neighbors in these kind of cases. Anybody else like to speak on the application? Seeing none, we'll close pub, oh, I'm sorry, come forward, we'll have the solicitor swear you in.
I'm David Gibson. I'm at nine oh seven, adjacent property.
Okay.
The one with the deck next to it.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is truthful, true, and lawful, and binding?
I do. I guess I just want to open up. I've been a lifelong resident of Hatton Heights, also. I went to schools here. I bought my first house here. This is my second home. Been there quite a few years. I don't come to these meetings. I don't have an objection to most, what people want to do with their home or what they're doing. What I see here is something that's kind of going to affect the overall value in the neighborhood. And that's what concerned me, and to tell you the truth, I talked to some of my neighbors, and I don't know if anyone's here tonight. Most think that's going to be a duplex. Nobody's gotten from the notice. I don't know if you've looked at the notice. There really isn't any talk of a triplex. Talk to a duplex. And so, I think more people would probably have maybe talked to this or come down here if they realized it was a duplex or a triplex at this point. And to me, that doesn't work on the street anymore. If you look at many of the blocks there now, and especially those first couple of blocks, no, no, no harm to you, sir. I mean, I understand what you're, you're trying to do here. And, and again, I don't come to these meetings. I don't block what people want to do. I just think that this is a, a quality of life, a chance to further transform Hatton Heights. I mean, these, this zoning rule was put in for a reason, obviously. And, you know, if we're not going to use it, then why, why have it, I guess, at this point? But I know you can't build any new ones, and, but it's been here for a long time. I'm not sure why it should transfer to a new owner, in a sense, knowing what the zoning is. But that being said, my concern is just quality of life and concern of devaluing homes around it. I mean, I'm sure nobody wants to have a triplex next door. It's almost an apartment building at that point, to me. You know, duplex, you can live with a little bit, and, but if you read the notice, no one, there's no place in that notice that we're going to create a triplex. And that really bothered me a little bit. I don't want to say it was deceptive, but it's it started the issue. I know what it did. It followed the rules on the zoning process.
Let me ask you this, or you, did you get the notice?
I'm sorry?
Did you receive the notice?
Yes.
And did the notice indicate that there was a, of an office building or an office and then two apartment units?
It said, we're looking at the, the first item was a duplex issue, and then they said they wanted to convert the use of the office. That's all said. I didn't know if they were, I got to tell you, the back apartment is not really an apartment. It's, it's a, I would call it maybe a, a studio. There's no bedroom there. I just assumed that what, you know, just out of the top of my, may, may bad assumption, that they're going to create bedrooms, he created a full apartment on the first level, and he created the duplex. So, I didn't realize there were three units from the right up. If you look at it, it's not really that clear that it's going to be. Now, when I went down, I, I took the time to go to the zoning office and, and look through the plans. I read through everything. And then it's clear in there, it's a triplex. I mean, that's, that's the end result of the product, so. Again, I just, I look at it from the welfare of, of everyone in the community there. Most of these homes in the, there were other duplexes on this block. They've, they've been converted. Even on the next block, a couple, a couple offices and duplexes, they've been converted. You know, no one's using them as duplexes. And, you know, I think that's restoring the value to Hatton Heights, and I think overall, it's good for the community. I mean, obviously, real estate pricing, if anyone's looked at the real estate pricing recently, things are going pretty well here in town, and we're doing something right, I think. And I just, I, this seems like a step backwards to me. That's what, one of the concerns I have with it. I've talked to somebody I know, other residents, one or two, couldn't come because they already had previous activity planned, or those things became more, like, we didn't know that was the plan, okay? That's kind of what I got from the inference.
I jump in a second?
Yeah, sure.
So, you know, the townwide yard sale was a week ago Saturday. Gave me and my wife Maria an opportunity to walk around, and besides giving the two-hundred-foot notice, I did introduce myself. Now, I got to say, I didn't go knocking on doors. I didn't want to be those guys that show up on Facebook, but I was ten for ten that day. I, I reached out and asked if, who would support it, and I have all these signatures of all the neighbors that I contacted and met that day. I didn't have one opposition on, one might walk through.
Well, and I know, I know part of the issue. They want that, they want the property.
We can't, we can't.
I mean, that, that, I understand.
That's overriding the issue.
But that's not, that could be, cannot be.
That's not going to be part of the record.
And even some of those people, if I look at their name, I think, they said they thought it was a duplex. Now, it's
And then just
I have no reason to lie about that.
And just when we're speaking of multifamily homes.
Well, actually, I'm going to, I'm going, and I'm going to interject.
Okay.
Mr. Donnelly, the, the board chair may ask you to respond to a question from a member of the public, but it's really the, it's the member of the public's opportunity to voice his opinions or ask questions. So, I would ask you to continue.
You'll have a chance, you'll have a chance to respond, Mr. Don.
And again, I, I don't have these things working. I never come to them, so. That's, that was, you know, a couple of those same people are probably on that list, and I know one said you talked to them. Unfortunately, I was out of town. We were on vacation for a couple of weeks, and I, and I didn't see you, and I would have loved, had a chance to talk to that, probably. She thought it was a duplex. I mean, that's, that was the bottom line, the one, the lady across the street.
Well, that's what, we just certified it as a duplex, because it was clear that it, two residential units existed.
Triplex.
The two residential units.
Right, but it's a triplex.
I'm sorry.
If we're legally talking about the term, the doc, what we just certified is a triplex.
Thank you, and I, I think that's important.
With a doctor's office and two residential.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Sorry. But, you know, it just seems high, too high density for this area. I, I'm just, I know, even if you look at some of those, they claim they're triplexes and duplexes, they're not using them. In some of those cases, they're not being used that way either. I mean, if you went and talked, they're not. But that's just from word of mouth that somebody's talking. I can't prove that, but that's typically they use it for an office, or they're using it for other, other purposes, but. I mean, that's, I was down here, I, you know, either way it goes, I'm, I'm I think, I think it's a step backward for Hatton Heights to just be continuing to allow these kind of properties to be developed, in a sense, while the rest of the neighborhood, we're saying, we're not, you don't, you're not going to be allowed to do it. So, what's, what's the real exclusion here? Just because it's been there for fifty years, I'm not sure. Here's a chance to change that. Once this is set, that's gone. We'll never have a chance to get, get that. And to me, it does demean or devalue your property value, or, you know, if you're going to show your properties, and they're going to say, oh, you live next to an apartment building, basically. And I didn't realize, but, but the, the parking, I'm not sure, six spaces in the backyard, the coverage. I had the same issue when I got, I had a variant.
He's going to have to submit a site plan that shows that.
But if you approve tonight, and then, then there'll be another variance request, so.
Yeah, he would have to come back for any bulk variance relief that he would need in that respect. That would all be, that all would be benefited.
I, I don't want, you know, I don't mean to, I'm not here to hurt people, or, I know your objective. I own, I own a, a rental property. It's a single unit. It's in a single-unit family area. You know, I try and keep it to the point where it's not else, you know, it's, it's not the outlier in, in the neighborhood, so to speak, but and it's in an area where others, possibly, is a non, it's close to others that are doing it next door. But anyway, the point being that I'm just concerned that, you know, we have these rules, we have residential variance, or residential, it says it's not conforming. Off the bat, it's not conforming, just based on the zoning itself. And if we're just going to keep overriding the zoning rules, then what it will have left anyway. But again, I appreciate the time, and I think it's just a general value to the neighborhood. It just, it depletes it.
We, we appreciate you coming out, Mr. Gibson, and I know it's not easy. I know it's not easy to come out and speak in opposition to something.
No, and I, I got to tell you, some of the some of the acceptance of neighborhood wouldn't be for the triplex, but if I believe that there's going to be a major change at that property, don't, don't kill it. Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem, you know, that it's being clouded by the fact that, and we're too negative here. I was at a graduation for my son today. I don't want, but the point being, I think it might have clouded some people's mind, and first of all, I think it's a duplex. I really do think they think it's a duplex, and also in a, or the result will be a duplex. And the fact that this, this property has been very poorly at best maintained, and that's going to, that's going to clean that issue up. And listen, I'm all for it being next door also, too. I need change there, too, and if they're going to remove the deck, that's, that would be one of the number-one things I want to be guaranteed, that the deck is just it's on the property, basically, two It's on the property, basically, two feet.
Sounds like the property is going to be substantially approved from what Mr. Donnelly is saying, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Congratulations on graduation.
Hope you didn't go to engineering school. Anybody else from the public want to speak on this application? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Do we want to give Mr. Donnelly a chance to respond?
I'm okay. I just, I did walk the neighborhood that day, and everyone seemed very supportive of it. That's all. They seemed supportive.
Further questions or comments from the board?
One question. Are these, are all three units going to be one-bedroom units?
Well, the third, the second floor may have an opportunity to be a two-bedroom, but the first floor would be two-one bedrooms.
Steve, does that affect parking?
It may. Our ordinance actually says two parking spaces, one bedroom for residential site improvement. Standards is 1.8 parking spaces.
Right, yeah.
It rounds up to two, so.
It winds up to six.
It's only really gets into a consideration when you're more than three or more bedrooms. So for an essence, one or two would still be rounding the two parking spaces.
May I just interrupt? The second
Well, sir. Sir.
I think he can come back.
We can reopen, we'll reopen public.
With permission, we can call from the audience.
I want to give him the chance to.
There apparently is a full bedroom on the second floor.
And this is for the record, Mr. Gibson continuing his conversation.
I swear, I'm telling the truth. And it is used as a bedroom. So there is a two-bedroom unit technically on the, on the second floor there. It's a third floor, and there's a, a, I was in it once, Senator, is a staircase it leads to, and it is finished, so. And it's been used even as soon, recently as a couple of months ago, because people are using the upstairs bedroom on that unit. So it's really a two-bedroom unit. I was wondering why it was left off the plans.
So it could be as many as Mr. Donnelly, it could be two two-bedroom units and a one-bedroom unit for it.
Two one-bedroom units, a possible two-bedroom.
Right.
Right now, there's a single girl up there, so there's just, you know.
But the max extent you would believe that would be able to be accomplished would be two two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom.
No, two one-bedrooms, one two-bedroom.
Okay, thank you.
And that's ready, set to go, as far as it looks to me.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, thank you for the clarification.
We'll close in. Does anybody else want to speak from the public? Okay, we'll close public again.
Do you want to make a comment about the notice issue? So I am reviewing the notice. The applicant, I mean, this is the notice that was, I believe, included in the application. So the applicant can correct me if I'm wrong. The notice does request an interpretation of the ordinance. Particularly Section 450-25 prohibits multifamily structures in the Arctic Zone. The applicant, when they did apply, did apply for an interpretation of the zoning ordinance. After multiple conversations, you know, we did determine that it was going to be for a triplex certification and for a use variance. I want to continue commenting about the notice is that he, it also says that there is a request to make for a determination of the planning board and a declaration that this property should be certified as a pre-existing not performing use and allow for the continued use of same as a triplex in the, in that same existed as a triplex, one medical office plus two residential units prior to the reordinance in 1972, with no abandonment of the present use. The applicant also requests other variances from any and all other requirements that are applicable and may be requested as may be appropriate and necessary waivers of requirements. So the applicant did, as I said, it was their application. They did request for an interpretation of the zoning ordinance. And then the application did evolve. Their notice does, does say that they're going to request other variances or waivers that may be necessary. So I did want to address that issue, especially because the notice does make mention of the triplex, which included one medical office and two residential units. So I just wanted to make that announcement for the board to make a determination of the, you know, the notice.
So you think that's sufficient for, I mean, it doesn't specifically talk about a use variance or a conversion to a third residential unit. That's where I'm, I was just looking at the same thing.
It doesn't. It doesn't.
So legally, I don't know what kind of.
Mr. Donnelly, was this the notice that was published to neighbors and also in the newspaper, that exact, that I read?
I'd have to double check. It's what I received.
Is there an updated copy? It's okay. Take a minute. The use variance is kind of where.
Continue use would be two residential and a two-bedroom.
I mean, I think that the that we could at least come back to the use variance. But I mean, this is
That's for the certification, that.
You have a copy of the notice?
This is what was sent to us.
So I have what I believe appeared in the paper.
Okay.
So first, I'm going to ask Mr. Donnelly, Mr. Donnelly, take a moment to read that. Does that appear to does that appear, does that appear to be, the notice that was provided in the public newspaper?
Do this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
So this is, I represent, this is African River. So, and this product might enter the public in the next year. That was a cloud.
Is this it? Is this the question?
And a borough of Hatton Heights for a duplex certification and a use variance and any other variances required at the premises.
This is the order.
That's what went to papers. Let's go to the reds. It's the one, the one that went to the use variance, also talks about, this is clearly the same. Use variance is referenced, duplex certification and a use variance.
I think that when I talk
Okay. But that means there are use variance as part of the notices.
Yeah, I think, I think whether
We're looking at the published notice and the notice that the resident was kind enough to provide in the rear. The use variance is referenced. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We'll, we'll pass it, pass everything around. So unless, it appears unless Elena has a different opinion that we would have jurisdiction to hear the use variance this evening, that it was properly noticed.
Well, that's included too, but the, the, that, the actual notice actually references a use variance.
Yes.
Unless it needs to be any more explicit than that, then.
So based on your interpretation of the notice that was published, we can, you think notice was proper with respect to the use variance that we're here for tonight. Says duplex certification and a use variance.
I'm no objection to the notice.
No, you, I think it's proper, but that's, you know, a professional for that, obviously.
Yeah. I think that was, that was when I think he was requesting the interpretation.
Which is fine, as long as it was theirs properly.
And the applicant, and also the reference application materials in the notice are the ones that we're working off of this evening, which was for a use variance application. And a call for very specifically two existing residential units and conversion of a first floor or doctor's office into an additional residential unit.
Okay.
So it all points to the, notice points to the application materials, the application materials on files were for the use variance.
Okay. Anybody else need to see any of these? So let's proceed with the, continue with the use variance hearing at this point.
So I believe we just closed the public portion.
Close public. And Elena had some questions, which you were raising about the notice, but it seems like we've answered those.
I think we've said, yeah, I think.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments at this point? Mr. Donnelly, anyone else? Elena, do you want to outline a possible motion at this point?
Yes, the applicant is requesting use variance to convert a commercial use to a residential use. The applicant was required to make the positive and negative criteria for a G1 use variance. For the D variance and the positive criteria, the applicant had to demonstrate there are special reasons for to grant the request of relief, especially that the property is particularly suited for the proposed use and the proposal will advance the purposes of the municipal land use law and the municipal asset plan and zoning ordinances. The applicant did provide positive criteria to that effect. The applicant is also required to approve the negative criteria, which is the variance, which can be a substantial detriment to the public good. It will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. The applicant did provide negative criteria to that effect as well. I wanted to reiterate the fact that a condition of approval, conditions of approval would be that the taxes would need to be paid. The applicant would have to return to the board for a minor site plan application. The applicant would also need to submit a rating plan if it was 500 feet of star vents for the, I mean, the parking improvements. And I think those are the conditions of approval.
Yes.
Of approval and the motion setting for this does.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a use variance to convert the doctor's office used to residential use for the triplex. Subject to the terms and conditions as outlined by Mr. Box's May 2025 letter. Also subject to what was just raised, with the taxes being paid, the minor site plan approval. And I was writing down the last one, but forgot.
If there were 500, where is it?
Grading plan.
Oh, yeah, the grading.
And the grading plan. Is that sufficient for the motion?
I'll second.
The questions or comments on the motion? All right, hearing none, we'll take a roll call, Susan.
Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Ms. Bonacorsi? Chairman Hanson?
I'm going to vote yes. I think this is a tough one because I grapple with what would the, would the space actually be used as if we don't convert this to a residential? It would most likely be a more intensive use with more parking requirements and a greater impact to the neighborhood, in my opinion. So with that being said, with all the conditions, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Famular?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Christie? And Ms. Porcher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's time.
So with the next, I'll give you this, I'm just seems to be able to give everybody. I'm only going to do this once this evening, so everybody else listen. Because we have six cases. Next month, when we have our meeting, we'll do a resolution memorializing the approval this evening. And then after that occurs, that'll be published in the newspaper. And on public, the publication date of that newspaper, when that goes in the newspaper, there's a 45-day appeal period where somebody could appeal the decision. And if you move forward with anything relative to your approval before the appeal period lapses, then you'd be doing so at your own risk, okay?
Got you.
Thanks, Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks for the thorough presentation.
Sorry, Tuckson.
No worries. That's it. That's what we're here for.
I know. That was a little tougher than I should have been. Thank you, thank you.
All right. Let the record reflect that Mayor Hough and Councilwoman Heron are going to rejoin us here. Let's see, what's our next case here? The next case is case number 25-5-2P, Mary Ann Gregory. 1305 Keswick Avenue, Block 81, lots 21 and 20, or 21 and 23. This is for a fence on a corner property. I'm going to have to recuse myself on this application. I'm on the 200-foot list. I got notice. I'm going to, since Dean's also not here, Mr. Schmidt has graciously volunteered to chair this application. I'm going to step aside. This is a trial.
Oh, thank you very much.
I'm going to live my journey. I'm going to charge my laptop.
Excuse me? Will you both be providing testimony this evening? Okay, and who's with you tonight?
Brian Yakel.
What's the last name?
Yakel.
And he's the contractor?
Yes.
Can you both raise your right hand? And you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Yes.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Gregory, can you please go over your application, what you were planning to do?
Yes, I live on the corner. I live at 1305 Keswick Avenue, the corner of 13th and Keswick. I have a corner lot of which my front yard is alongside of my side yard. It is a twin home. I currently have a fence that's extremely dilapidated and needs replacement. So basically, what we're doing is removing the current fence and putting in a new fence. The current fence that I have is a lattice-style wood cedar fence that, once again, has to be replaced. And we're putting in a black aluminum spindle. I guess that's the word, right? Fence along the 13th Street side and along the Keswick side. I currently have landscaping. I provided about 43 or 48 pictures in with my application to show that all of that landscaping and ivy is being completely removed. And there was a situation of which I was told that the landscaping would be possibly blocking vision, because I am on the corner of 13th and Keswick. But I am assuring you that all of the landscaping is being removed. It'll be all grass. And we currently have eight-foot panels. But it's going to be reduced to six-foot wide panels. The panel that I'm looking to get is a 54-inch height. The panel that I'm looking to get is a 54-inch height. The posts, the panels that I have now are 48 inches and the posts are 54. So I went to apply for, obviously, a permit and I was told that I needed to have a variance. So we've been working on this to try to, once again, beautify the, my home. Right now, it's, it looks a mess and it just needs to be replaced. I did replace my fence back about 30 years ago, of which I only had to obtain a permit and there was never any issues with any of that. And now that I've come to this, I'm in a situation where I had to get a variance. So I'm here in front of the board to beg and plead to give me approval to have a fence put in. So I don't know what other questions you might have.
Can we go, and you've received Mr. Box's letter. Can he, I'll let him go through it?
Did you receive our review letter?
Yes.
So a few questions here, and you did provide application materials, photographs. So the highlighted, this is your highlighting on the application materials? Where, where the proposed fence was going?
Yes, well, we hit.
Yes, that's where the fence is.
That's where the fence is going.
So the, the one area of the fence along the rear driveway, that driveway is just for your property?
Yes.
All right. And, but the, the current fence doesn't go all the way that far back because there's actually a large tree where I think you're proposing part of that fence.
No.
Unless I'm incorrect here.
No, the fence that we're proposing is exactly where the existing fence is now. It goes around that tree.
So if you could just show me where the fence would be here.
On the whole property?
No, just on this portion, along the back rear.
Well, it's tough to tell.
And that's gonna, and I'll verbalize what's being shown.
It's coming right down here, coming down the sidewalk, and then there's a garage right here and we're going back into the garage. I don't know exactly where it was in the picture. It's tough to see.
So you're going all the way out to the alley?
Yes, we're following the existing fence.
Wherever the fence is right now is what we're evaluating.
So there is a recommendation for clear sight distances in our review letter of being 14.5 feet off of the face of the curb. And that'd be appropriate for Keswick and 13th. Have you looked at that requirement as to how that would affect the placement of where your, your survey doesn't have any information on existing sidewalks?
So if you need a 14 and a half foot setback off of
Face of curb, face of curb, yes.
Yeah, correct. So that would move the fence back probably about seven feet from where it is now into her property.
Seven feet additional. So.
Seven feet additional add on the other side of the sidewalk?
So from where the street edge is?
To the end of the sidewalk, and then it would be, we probably know their
Seven or eight feet in.
The fence as is right now is
Is on the property.
On sidewalk.
It's right on.
Right on the edge of the, it's right on the back edge of the sidewalk.
Right.
And again, that's
That's the issue.
Yeah. And then also, there'd have to be some sort of separation from the edge. We're gonna have the fence right on the alley line. That would also be inappropriate.
Which is where it is now?
Which I don't believe it is.
In the property line. It's still on my property, the fence. There's a space, actually, there's a plot, a small plot of grass before the actual asphalt begins where they, they come into the driveway.
Yeah, there you go.
So on the alleyway, that appears, if it's gonna go in the exact location, again, I don't, I don't have a detailed survey of this, but if they're putting the fence in the exact location where the existing fence is, that'd be consistent with the line of fences down that alleyway as well as the garages. Really, the concern really has to be on the right-ofways, 13th and Keswick Avenue, of having it immediately behind the sidewalks and not having clear sight distances, especially at that corner intersection. So we would still recommend that it be 14.5 feet off the back face of the curb on both of those right-ofways.
On Keswick and 13th.
Yes.
So the one, sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt, but the, I don't know which tree is this one right here?
13th and Keswick.
So Keswick, if you move that back off the street 14 and a half feet, it almost puts it on top of her house.
I don't believe that's true, but again, I don't have a scaled, I don't have any scaled information here to represent that. Or I can go off the aerials.
It's a very difficult house because the front is not the front. The pool, you don't know what the actual front of the house is, to be honest with you. But where she accesses her house, which I consider the front doors on the Keswick side, that fence coming closer to the house is almost on top of the house at that point. So if I may clarify, frontage on Keswick, the door actually would sit on the side of the house facing 13th. It's very hard to just blur people that.
Not mine.
Yep, so you see that? So this is the corner of the house, the front corner of the house is right here. Your house is your fence, so if we would have moved the fence, we would have tried to like, inject it with the side of the house, we actually
Well, that's, that's what's being proposed in the application materials. I'm only trying to, I'm trying to assist here. So the application materials show currently that the fence would be coming off of the corner of the house, the front corner that, the frontage of the house facing Keswick and the corner of the house that's closest to 13th. That's where the fence would start and, and extend. So does everybody have the same highlighted fence? I, I think that's important. This is what we're reviewing against. So right now, it's showing coming from the corner of the house.
Going towards Keswick.
Going towards Keswick, not going along the frontage of the house, but from corner of the house towards Keswick, along Keswick, along 13th, along the back of the alley, and then tying back into the garage.
Yes.
And then from, from the other corner of the garage, going back in and tying into the other outfield. So I don't believe moving it 13.5 feet off of Keswick is actually gonna be changing the impact to the front of your home along Keswick because it'd just be a shorter little connector coming perpendicular towards Keswick. And I understand that the fence was there and unfortunately, unfortunately for you, you didn't have me review it all those years ago, and I still recommend, recommend that we should have a appropriate sight distance along those two, through roadways.
Now, it's the entire lane, length of both them and the driveway or not the driveway?
14.5 feet is a national standard. It is really to provide for a clear sight distance, not only where the motorist's coming down the roadway. So there are driveways, so if you have the fence all the way out at the property lines, that is gonna impair view as you're traveling in the adjacent lane of each of one of the roadways of seeing what's coming out of those driveways or going into those driveways going forward.
If I can interrupt, I have a swimming pool there.
I don't believe, I don't believe this would go to the impact of the swimming pool. This won't go even to the concrete apron.
I've been around fence for a long time. This is a very different type of situation because of the way her house is laid out, 100%. I disagree with the driveway. This is, there's not one driveway on her property that this fence will block. This fence is very visible. It's aluminum fence. You can see through it. Anything that you put in that area is not gonna block anyone from driving.
Do you have a picture of the fence, the proposal?
It was provided as part of the application materials.
So we took a picture of her dog, I believe, did you?
Yes.
So we took a picture.
There's pictures there with my dog.
Yeah.
I saw that.
Yeah, to show what we're doing and what it is now.
That was actually.
Yeah. So you can see how visible it is to see through there. The other thing is where her property corner is, is not a stop sign. So no one's actually stopping at that corner to have to look around it to continue driving. So I personally don't think this is a visual that will mess with any site plans or anything like that, personally.
And just again, for my, my opinion and my testimony is that if you put the picket fence in, the picket fence, and I know the applicant has every good intention, but once you put a fence in, there's no prohibition of having vegetation immediately behind the fence that would stop it from being a picket fence. I'm just looking at a standard that we can utilize in terms of providing a clear line of sight to the motorists, not only for a driveway on this property, but also for the alley when you're going down 13th or when you're going to Keswick for adjacent driveways that absolutely occur. So it is a variance. There is no, the variance is to provide for the fence in the front yard. So.
I guess Steve is there, obviously, and the, the big issue we're having, I understand what you're saying and we understand what the fence looks like, but the problem is, is where that end of that fence is going to be on Keswick and on 13th. Anyone pulling up to that intersection, it's, it's a, it's a hazard. I mean, it's, it's a problem. That's why there's national standards set and that's why the setbacks are what they are. And they're not our setbacks. There are setbacks that are across the country. So I guess the question is, is there anything, Steve, that we can do or that the applicant can do to, whether you pull it off the corner, whether, like, whether you reconfigure the fence, that, that would make it acceptable to you? Other, like the straight 14, I mean, not acceptable to you, but to the standards, the 14.5.
That is generally accepted standard. Typically, that's why we do not allow these type of fences in the front yards because you should be able to have a clear sight going down the travel lane adjacent to that curb line.
Down all of Keswick and down all of 13th because they're two front yards.
Right.
It's the front and the side yard. My backyard isn't all the way to the rear of the house. It's a small little area.
And again, we're only working off our ordinance. We have two front yards that we're dealing with and so both of those would be the two front yards. Again, I only have, I don't have, I don't have a scaled survey. I don't have an exact location where the fence is being proposed. I hear, I hear representation from the contractor that he believes that's gonna be seven and a half feet. That's the same one, but it'd be seven and a half feet further in from the face of the curb, based on the aerial photography. Maybe the applicant indicated the curb, the grass strip that's in front of your house on Keswick.
Right.
But how, how wide is that from the curb to the sidewalk?
Two feet probably. Just the grass and then the sidewalk?
I think that can be, that can be two feet.
Are you saying between the curb and the sidewalk?
Yeah, between the curb and the sidewalk.
It's less than two.
Yeah.
Mr. Box, I, I do have, through the beauty of Google, and there does, approximately 10 feet from the face of the curb to the current fence.
So that's currently right there.
It's currently at 10 foot.
So based on, thank you, Mr. Schmidt, so based on that, then it would be 4.5 feet in from the existing fence location, not seven and a half feet. So that is what's being suggested as part of my review comments. Move the fence in approximately four and a half feet from where it is right now along the frontages of Keswick and 13th.
Takes away from my property line, doesn't it?
It's, it's actually still in the public right-ofway, I believe. No, I mean, no, no, no. It does take, it takes away from the fenced area of property. Yes, it does.
Any other way around it to keep it? I really would like to keep it in the same spot that it's in. I don't understand. I've had a lattice fence there for the last 30 years that obviously you can see through, but not quite as clear as this. And I am taking it, I'm paying, going through the expense of removing every piece of landscaping I have and having a flat land. I may as well cement the front yard at that point.
All right, so.
I miss, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I've lived in the house since 1986 and I, this is the second fence that I'm putting, I moved in, there was a white picket fence that I had a permit put in, took that one out, put the current cedar fence in, and now I'm doing this and now all of a sudden I have to change property lines. It doesn't make sense.
Something for the board's consideration, something for the board's consideration. If the applicant can agree that for the four and a half feet, I, I still don't think it's appropriate to have a fence right at the sidewalk, right at the back of the sidewalk because it currently exists. I don't believe that's appropriate, but maybe what we could do is agree to move it back two feet from behind the sidewalk and the other, what I would, which I would believe would be three and a half feet, that there'd be no vegetation inside of that three and a half feet, so that picket fence would always appear as a picket fence. So in other words, if the, the applicant is, and, and the applicant's contractor has indicated picket fence see-through, that's fine. If you, instead of having it right behind the sidewalk, move two feet off of the sidewalk instead of the four and a half feet, but agree not to plant anything that would obstruct any visibility, like a hedge or a shrub, because that's what our ordinance says, no solid wall, hedge or shrub in the front yard, not have any plantings behind the picket fence for the three and a half feet.
Along the entire course of the fence on Keswick and all 13th.
Yes. Again, I'm trying to work within the guidelines of what we have as an ordinance in our current rules and I, I completely understand the difficulty of taking something that may have been installed prior to the fence ordinance being put in place.
How about doing an angle at the corner and staying on the property?
But, but it's, it's, it's not just, it's not just for the site triangle at the corner. It's for when you're driving down the road that you actually can see when people are pulling in and out, especially that alley and people are going in and out of that alley like it's a street. I, I'd be very uncomfortable. And also, driving down Keswick, that you do have driveways on the adjacent properties.
There is no driveways.
On the adjacent properties?
No, not at all. They're all parked in the back. At 1300, there's a brand-new home on the corner, parking's in the back. The white house that's next door.
That's a driveway.
Where is that?
That's one, not your next-door twin, but the next.
That's two houses past our house.
That's two houses past my house, from the back of the house.
And that's exactly the point. I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just
And we're, we're trying to, trying to work within the confines of what we're allowed to work.
I just, I, I mean, it's just very frustrating at this point because I'm trying to beautify my house. I have a fence that's there. I've lived in this house for 38 years. It's never been a problem. Now that I have to replace it, I'm getting all of this thrown into it. I just, I don't, I, I just can't believe that things aren't grandfathered in at this point because I've lived there for so long and previous fences have been there. All of a sudden now, I, you're taking away my property line. You want me to come in so many feet in off of it?
It's, so it's not taking away your property line. It's, it, it's within the ordinances. And, and every day in towns across the country, ordinances change and regulations change. What you have to understand is if we were to grant this as you requested and there's an accident on that corner, that opens up liability from across the board. And so that's why these issues are in place. And that's why we're trying to work with you to come up with a resolution that can make
I, I understand what you're saying. I lived in that house for 38 years. The front of, I can see completely, I've lived there for 38 years. There has never been as much as a fender bender of that corner of 13th and Keswick nor by that alley. And now, all of a sudden, it's becoming an issue. I'm not saying I can go home tonight and something would happen, but there has never been any sort of major accidents. I'm sure you have capabilities of looking through the records to make sure that there was never an accident. Now, all of a sudden, it's becoming a thing. It doesn't make sense. I, I'm investing a lot of money to make my property look good and I'm getting fought for it. And it's, it's just
We're not trying to play, we're trying to, if this was an open shot case, it would just be
Well, it was open and shut.
What is here? We're asking questions. We're only asking questions to try to understand, try to
So since I have the pool, I'm doing a double fence. I have the fence around the perimeter of the property and I'm also enclosing the pool area just for safety reasons. Right now, the pool's not even operational. I don't even use it, but I'm putting a fence around the pool for future use if I ever open it again, if the house ever gets sold. What happens if I decide to open up my yard on the one side and just fence around the pool, which I don't want to do? I'd rather have a complete fenced-in yard.
I don't think that's an issue. You can, you can take the fence down as long as the pool's fenced. You can, you can take the fence down as long as the pool's fenced.
Right, but now I have half of my property. With a fence around it. And that's the front of my home. It doesn't make it balanced.
So are you.
And I think the main issue is the fact that Steve is, you know. Potentially not, no clear site trial.
Well, and here's, here's an essential issue, and I just want to make sure the vote is right in our review comment on May 7th. Is the ordinance, per section 450-96, a new fence edge or solid wall shall be located in the front of the building line of the structures located on any street? So there's no fencing permitted in any of the front yards. That's, so that any relief. You're going to ask for relief if you're providing any fencing in the front yards in the borough of Haddon Heights. And the building line shall be defined setback from any street or lane which fronts on the structure. On corner properties that apply, the setback shall be conformant with both streets. So to put a fence in the front yard is automatically the variance here. So that's, it's not permitted by the ordinance. What we're trying to do, and very much based on the application materials we have here. I think we established where the fence is right now, which is the existing fence. And again, we don't have any information in record with the perimeter office. That that fence was ever approved 35 years ago or how it came about or whether there's any approvals. We're not saying it wasn't put in up with a fence permit. We just don't have any information in terms of zoning. So to try to find some compromise. A simple recommendation was made in our review letter that following an ASHTO standard for clear sight lines, 14.5 feet from the face of the curb. We understand that that could be some difficulty to you. So I, I think there could be that compromise that you could do it at 12 feet. You said it was 10 feet to the back.
It's 10 feet.
You could do it at 12 feet from the face of the curb and the other 2.5 feet agree not to put any vegetation. Above 30 inches that would hinder any sight distances. That, that's, I'm trying to work through what we can do and still. Go with the intent of our ordinance, you know, because it is a variance. It's relief. It's not permitted right now and we're trying to see if there's a way to have some relief granted.
So my fence would be here. I would come in two more feet.
Only two, two feet and not plant anything for two and a half feet behind that fence along the two streets. That's higher than 30 inches. So it wouldn't become a hedge or, or anything that would.
So she could do a stone bed or mold.
Stone bed, plantings, perennials, any sort of gardening, anything else, but nothing that would be considered. A hedge or a hedge, anything that would be up 30 inches. And I think that would meet the intent because 30 inches or below is not, 30, 30 inches or below. Is not considered in general engineering practice an impediment to clear sight distance.
That's my only alternative?
Well. Your, your alternative is to ask exactly for what you're asking for and, and. The board could act on that or you could amend your application to what we discussed this evening and the board would act on what we amended.
My recommendation? Take it and roll.
And if I take it, what's the next step? How soon can I get my fence? And am I approved for the 50?
We'll get to, we'll get to that part of it.
So if, if you voluntarily amend the application for what I just stated, and I think we're all clear what I just stated. If you amend the application to what was just stated, then the board would act on that. And if you get an affirmative vote from the board, then you would be approved to have the variance with those conditions. And then someone on the board is going to tell you that you, there's going to be a memorializing resolution in 30 days. But you can proceed at your own risk and go submit for your fence permits and everything else. So the question is, would you like to amend the application for what we just discussed?
Okay, anything more from the applicant? We're going to open up to public for any public comments? Seeing nothing from the public or close the public portion? More comment, anything from the board or do you like, are we ready to hear the? Lane's interpretation?
12.5 feet, right?
Yes. So I'll state it and maybe I can just state a little bit of the conditions of the resolution. And I'll be correct about the solicitor. The applicant has amended their application to install the. 54 inch high black aluminum and rail fence. Along the three front yards of the reference property. Along the alley, the fence would be in the same location as currently exists. Which we heard testimony was approximately. About two feet away from the edge of the alley, which is consistent with the adjacent fencing and other structures along the alley. Along the Keswick and 13th Avenue frontages. The applicant will install their fence at 12 feet from the face of the curb. And the applicant, and the, and this is a 54 inch high picket fence. And the applicant will agree that along the picket fence along 13th and Keswick. That interior of the fence for a distance of two and a half feet. There will be no plantings, landscaping's or any obstructions higher than 30 inches ever installed.
Steve, can I just make a comment? You do have on your letter number five about some extra lots that were on the application. Did you receive any clarification for that?
I spoke to the girl in your office. I talked to Suzanne as well.
So Suzanne, so. You have something with that? Thank you.
So we can ignore that comment?
So this consists of lots?
This is lot 21.
21.
Being lots 21, but the application actually has 21, 22 and 23, but.
They merged them.
This is only for lot 21. That's the clarification I need. Thank you. You probably called to Karen, but it didn't get to me. I'm sorry.
That's okay. But she told me she didn't talk to Suzanne about it. And Suzanne, you're the boss.
Thank you.
Do we want to hear the legal criteria?
Yeah, so the applicant is requesting a bulk variance to construct a fence. The applicant demonstrated the property is, has two front yards and a quarter property. So that really in itself is a hardship, but it sounds like the property is the way that it's constructed in terms of the doors. It's just a difficult spot. So for a bulk C, it sounds like it would be a C1 variance, which is. The applicant must demonstrate the strict application of the zoning. Regulations for property create a hardship or result in substantial practical difficulties by reason of the fact that the property is an unusual shape. And it sounded like the applicant did provide that criteria. And also with the conditions of approval that Steve mentioned.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Anyone want to make a motion?
Just the one question, Steve, you said two different numbers. I want to make sure we're right. Is it 14.5 feet the total setback? So it's 12.5 feet from the curb is where the fence or 12?
I thought it was 12.
12. And then 12 feet, so 12 feet from the curb for the fence and 2.5 feet of an area that would not be planted. With anything larger than 30 inches. Anything inside of that, they can do larger shrubs, whatever they want. But it's two and a half feet inside of the fence line, which would give you the equivalent with the nature of the picket fence. Of the same distance of the, site distance of 14.5.
Okay, so there's a 2.5 foot buffer on the inside of the fence.
Right.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended application as set forth by. In our discussion by Mr. Bach to approve the 54 inch black aluminum fence. In the same place along the alley as, as the current fence is, but along Keswick and 13th Avenue. It'll be 12 feet from the curb line. With another 2.5 feet of buffer on the inside where no vegetation can be planted higher than 30 inches. That's the motion I'll make as to the amended application.
And the, one more thing is that the applicant must comply with 450-96 on also in Steve's letter. Regarding fences.
No, that's, that's the whole conversation. 450-96 is all the whole conversation about the 14.5. So in essence, I believe that this configuration would comply with that, that condition as amended. So.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a roll call?
Ms. Bonacorsi? Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Miss Mayor Houck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Herron?
Yes.
Mr. Familar?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
Ms. Burkin?
Yes.
You have, so it's passed. You, you were, you heard the explanation at the last, at the end of the last one. This will be memorialized next month and then you may apply for permits after it is been noticed in the paper.
Yeah, so it's a month and then another 45 days, correct?
It put it at your, at your own risk. If you wanted to go pull a fence permit, you could. The other thing, when you go in to pull the fence permit, just the note, just try to scale off.
Got it. I'll give you one measurement.
Yeah, and on the curb and everything else, just show those dimensions on there. So when you take it into Suzanne, it'll go right through.
All right.
We'll talk outside.
Yeah, you guys can talk.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is appropriate to call the next one up while they're. While Jeff is coming in, we'll go call the next case, 20, 25 dash 5 dash 3P, James and Chelsea. Kalski. Kowalski.
Can we consider you in while we're waiting? Spencer, are you both going to?
Yes.
How's John doing? You hired?
Oh, yeah.
Provide your names and records.
Chelsea Kowalski.
Jason Vico. Jason Vico.
And what is your relation to the architect?
I'm the architect.
Can you spell your last name?
V is in Victor, I C O.
Can you both sort of raise your right hand to swear or affirm that the test when you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth?
I do.
And Rebecca, can we call qualifier as an expert?
Sure.
You're an architect?
Bachelor from Drexel University, principal owner of Fethic Architects, licensed in New Jersey, Pennsylvania and Delaware.
Does your license per?
Yes.
And if I, with the chairman's permission, if I may, just walk us through a little bit. We issued a May 8th, 2024 review.
Please, Steve, I'm sorry.
I think you forgot something.
Can you just wait a second?
I can do whatever you tell me to do.
Steve. In your, in your letter, you have the architect's records. No, there was a phone out there. Okay. It's on the first page. Try to sell it.
Mr. Vico just is an architect and you just provided credentials. Do you want to move to get that again?
I think I heard Drexel University.
Yeah, you did say his license is, license is required.
Jersey, Delaware. Architecture. We'll accept him as an expert in the field of architecture. Thank you.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think to assist with the application. I would refer the applicant to the board during May 8th, 2024 review. The applicant is proposing to construct a two and a half story addition to an existing dwelling. South Wesley side of First Avenue between Kings and Station Avenue. Currently, the property contains two and a half story dwelling, detached concrete block garage. Driveway and other associated improvements. The applicant is proposing their addition and patio in the rear of the property. And also are proposing to remove a section of their existing driveway. The, this would result in. Two new variances being required, one for the side yard of 10.2. Two feet as a proposed side yard. It is noted, there's an existing side yard, single side, non-performance of 3.94. And a new side aggregate side yard of 20.92 where 35 feet is required. So we have two existing side and that side, we have an aside and a side aggregate existing non-performance, which we would like to note for any approving resolution. But the relief here is very specifically for the new addition of 10.2. As a single side yard and 20.92 as the aggregate side yard where 15 and 35 are respectively required. Also as existing additions, the minimum lot size in the R1 residential zone is 10,000 square feet. No, I'm sorry. Minimum lot size in the R1 zone is 15,000 square feet. The existing lot is and will remain 10,000 square feet. Also, we would like to note that the minimum lot width in the zone is 75 feet. Existing and will remain 50 foot in terms of lot width, maximum lot coverage on the property. The maximum required, the maximum permitted in our ordinance is 30%. The existing condition is 50.61, as I indicated. The applicant is removing a section of existing driveway. To bring the proposed condition to 50.56 slightly under the existing block coverage that currently exists. So we would note that as an existing condition. And then the only other one is that it appears that there is an outbuilding that is larger than 450 square feet. Which is the existing garage that'll remain larger than 450 square feet. So that's really the relief that is requested this evening. I'm going to ask the applicant, is there anything that I indicated that? Is different than your understanding of your application materials that you presented? Is there anything you would want to add in terms of testimony and, and why? Well, let me, let me say this one more thing. The applicant is in the historic district and you did receive historic district commission approval. And I believe you received that at the March 20, am I correct, March 27th meeting?
Yes.
All right. And that's part of the application files that are one file with the planning board secretary. So for the relief. And Madam Solicitor, you're going to stop me if I say anything wrong here. But the, the current property is undersized in terms of the existing size of lot compared to what is required in the zone. And then also it is, it is more narrow than what is typically required, than what is required in the zone. And it appears that you're lining up the rear addition right to, very close to the. The two and a half story principal structure.
Correct.
You're lining that straight up. There is a little side addition.
It was a porch that was enclosed.
Right. So that's, that's like a one story addition, but the two and a half story principal structure is where you're lining up your rear addition.
That's correct.
So in essence, from the First Avenue. This or the First Avenue view of your home. It's not going to look really any different than what it currently looks like right now.
That's correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions for Steve?
Or the applicant?
Or the applicant. I was going to say that next.
Sorry.
Thank you. That's okay. Any questions for the applicant? Let's opening, open the.
Let's, uh, opening, open the hearing to the public. For any questions or comments on this application, come forward. Absolutely, we'll have the solicitors where are you in?
You're welcome.
Name your name to the record.
Sure, my name is Teresa Peach.
Peach?
Will you take me to spell it for you?
Is it the traditional like?
No.
What was it?
It's P.I.E.T.S.C.H.
I saw where you were going with that. Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So good evening, everyone. It's been a long evening, so I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. So I have lived at 18 First Avenue, which is block seven, lot three, with my husband Greg Palmer, who's in the audience, for 32 years. We are here today to seek clarification about the proposed plans that I was notified is a two-story addition, but I heard three times in the last two minutes. It's two and a half, and I brought my notice. I hope that our comments and questions can be taken in the spirit that we offer them, which is just to seek clarification and understanding of the impact to our home and our asset. Just as our new neighbors are seeking to beautify their new home, we are here to ensure that our home continues to be as beautiful as it is today. So I hope my concerns can be addressed satisfactorily. After all, I know our new neighbors are blue hens, and your husband are blue hens. So it's great to have two new blue hens meet us in the neighborhood. As the homeowner of 18 First Avenue for 32-plus years, we have enjoyed the beauty of our home without any large additions that change the footprint of our home. It's basically the same footprint as when we bought the house in 1993. I know no one in the board has actually been in our home, but let me explain that our family room has for decades the beauty of natural lighting. It illuminates our family room, our foyer, and on the second floor, our second bed, our bedroom is on the second floor. Based on the concerns, based on the plans, we are concerned about the blockage of natural light to our home. And now hearing that it's two and a half stories, my concern has been exponentially increased. So I'm here to ask, has the architect of this, or the architect of this project, considered the impact of natural light on our home at 18 First Avenue? If yes, has the board reviewed that and considered that as they look at these plans? If no, I respectfully ask that the board ask for a report on the blockage of natural light to 18 First Avenue, that you evaluate the report and consider it before any plans are approved by the board. So on a different note, and I do have the letter with me, I did note that in the letter, the variance asked for, or the statement in the letter says, "Any other variance required at the premises located on block seven, lot four at 22 First Avenue." A very generic statement is in this letter, so we'd like clarification on that also. On a different note, and it's kind of interesting sitting here because I heard a lot about safety in the last plans that you looked at, I'm concerned about the amount of equipment and traffic that will impact it on First Avenue. If this is not the correct venue to ask the question, then please just direct me to the right committee to ask it. But, so some of my concerns are what plans are in place to allow normal traffic to flow without impediment with this project? What are the hours that construction equipment will be in place? But more importantly, let me put this in context, we live on the crest of the hill on First Avenue. If trucks are parked outside our home or the adjacent homes, I will personally have great difficulty exiting my home. I am short by statue, I'm four foot 11. So my vision, sight vision, when I pull out of my home is much different than my husband's, and I'm very concerned if there is a lot of traffic there, I will not be safe pulling out of my home, and I don't want to have an accident, and I don't believe you do either. So those are some of the questions that I have. I'm also going to ask who will be monitoring this project, that the project is implemented as approved, and would that person be our contact? At this point, based on what I know, I won't speak for my husband, I would have to say as the resident of 32 years at 18 First Avenue, I don't have enough information to say from my worldview, and I know I don't have a voting right, I'd be very concerned about this project based on the negative impact that I believe 18 First Avenue will have as far as natural light goes. So I'd like you to consider my objection. And I'd also like you to consider that the letters, the letter that we received does not say it's a two and a half story. It says it's a two-story addition. So thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Mrs. Stevens.
Can I try to organize the responses with your permission, Mr. Chairman? So the first question is for the architect, two and a half stories. Uh, so it's two useful stories. Explain the half story. The attic space.
Correct.
Would the attic space be, uh, so from the exterior, the, the current structure is a two and a half story structure.
Correct.
So the roof line would in essence be the same height, uh, at the eaves or where the gutters are as currently exists.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I lined up the ridges. Yeah, the ridges are the same.
And the ridges are the same heights. So I don't know if that, the, the half story, which we have to know the half story, because it's not a flat roof, is the gable roof, which is the attic space. So that is what is being proposed, is two and a half stories.
So are we talking about increased height?
No.
No, exactly the same height as the existing structure is what's being proposed. So I think, believe, that was the first question.
Yep, may I ask one quick question? Is 18, if you're looking at 22, are you to the left or to the right?
So if you're looking at the house, we're to the right.
I'm saying in the street looking 22, you're to the right.
Right to the right.
And there's one property, then your property?
No, I'm right next to it.
You're right next to it.
And so is this your property, ma'am, with the addition and the garage? So this is the subject property?
Why I said turn it over, that's good, I'm sorry.
So the one that has the 18 one in?
Yes.
All right, thanks. So I'm going to ask, the next one is I'm going to ask the applicant's architect, I'm sorry, yeah, applicant's architect, whether you believe the two and a half story based on the proximity of the dwelling at 18 First Avenue and the proximity of not only the existing house, but the proposed two and a half story addition, whether that will impede any light in the air or any other impediment to the enjoyment of 18 First Avenue.
I do not.
All right, and that's, and that's based on?
The new orientation of north, the sun angles in the winter and summer. I don't believe there's going to be any impact.
And the distance approximately, it's 9.85 feet currently as a side yard set back on the, the property line. That's adjacent to, uh, 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 Ms. Peach. And then what would you estimate the distance from Ms. Peach's, uh, uh, home to the property line being?
Her house to the property line?
Yes. And do you, do you know off the top of your head, from, when you're looking at your house and the, your yard on the side that is adjacent to the applicant's property, about how far is it from the side of your house to your property line?
I couldn't speak to that. I don't know.
Does anybody know?
From the house to the property line?
Yes.
Do you want to start her with, is she going to give a testimony?
We don't know.
Oh, I'm suspicious.
Yeah, sorry, you're just some formality. Do you want to approach? I know.
Can you Google that one for me?
What is your, sorry for your name for the record?
For the record only, Greg Palmer.
And what is your address?
18 First Avenue, Everestide in Haddon Heights.
And, uh, yeah, you already had your hand raised, you're well sent ahead. Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely, yes.
So.
So I'm guessing between the house to the line of, property line is probably 20 feet. I'm just a guess.
And even then, I believe your first initial reaction was 15 feet, so even that.
Yeah, I'm just guessing.
So, and I think would be conservative at 15 feet. So I ask the architect again, so with the 15 feet to, from the property line to the adjacent property, as well as the 9.8 feet, that's approximately 25 feet.
Yeah, I'm roughly 18 on Google Earth.
Yeah, so, but say 15, 15 plus the nine, that's approximately 25 feet. Would anything with a two and a half story addition block any sunlight to the adjacent property?
And so we have documentation that the, the mathematical calculations are perfect to confirm this?
From the, we've mapped it, the sun angle it angles does.
Has that been done?
Usually all designs, we've mapped it.
Yes.
So may I just clarify, has that actually been done?
That is not a requirement of the submission requirements for the application materials under our ordinance. Uh, all we can do is take the testimony of the applicant and the applicant's professional that it would not impede with the sunlight based on his testimony. I am, I am, I am satisfied except for the low angle of a sunset or a sunrise. I don't believe there will be any impairment of sunlight, and I believe, yeah, we brought it that testament.
To answer your question, Ms. Parker, based, just generally guessing where that property line is, about 15 feet from the property line to the house. Are you, the, the main section of 18 is what you're asking for, correct?
Yeah, which is the, which is, yes.
Not to do, because the, the, is that a garage in the back?
No. It's where the family room is.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, they're addition off the back. I'm, I'm saying, and my, my question to the applicant's architect is, your, your professional testimony is that there would be no impairment except for the sunrise and sunset of blocking any sunlight to the adjacent property based on the proposed addition.
Correct.
So can I just clarification on that again, please? What is going to be blocked? Sunrise and sunset?
No.
No, okay, so.
Well, yes.
If any, just sunrise, early morning sunrise.
Sunset would be on the other side.
Oh, sunset, I'm sorry.
So just for everyone's information, I'm an early riser, 4:00 AM to that early sunrise is important to me. I know it may not be important to you all, but I just want to make that comment.
Isn't it, when the sun, where does the sunrise relative to your house? Sunrise is, I grew up.
Yeah.
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 I, I just need to clarify for the board and for the applicant and for, for the, uh, Ms. Peach. There is no requirement in our ordinance, nor any part of, uh, our ordinance that requires any vistas be preserved. You cannot impede and should not impede, uh, uh, light and air. So this would not impede any light getting to the adjacent property and absolutely would not impede any ventilation or anything else. That's the basic tenet of the municipal land use law and zoning, especially in New Jersey. So will this addition, if you're looking at the sunrise at any one day, will this block part of the sunrise that maybe is not blocked, correct, currently? Absolutely could be, absolutely could be, but there's no prohibition on that. You, having a vista being permanently preserved.
Thanks, Steve.
That is one of its helps here. The other question was, uh, any and other variances. So typically in the municipal land use, planning boards, underboard applications, the notice to the public typically has the provisions of having any and other variances that may be necessary. Typically, that's because other variances may be identified by the applicant, I'm sorry, by the board's professional, which I just did in our review letter where we noted several existing conditions. Undersized lot, uh, the width of the lot is, uh, existing non-conforming based on the current ordinance. It may have absolutely been conforming at the time it was built, but under our current ordinance, those are two existing additions. So that's typically why that language is in there, to identify those things, uh, as well as anything else that might come up during a review. But all the relief has already been represented, and I, I've read over all the, all the variances that are new variances as well as existing non-conformances, which could be considered existing variances, for lack of a better term.
I purpose to just reference that language is used in almost, I don't know if I've ever seen a notice provisioned in the document.
It's very, very rare.
An applicant's attorney, it's in every single notice that we put out. Um, Steve, did you want to address the, I know a lot, one of the questions was the time that construction would happen. I have the ordinance open.
If you could do that, I was going to go construction equipment next.
Sure, so the, um, there's actually an ordinance 301-1 that said hours during which certain activities are prohibited. And one of those activities is construction activities. And the hours that they are allowed to operate are weekdays, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sundays and holidays, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
And that's, that's for all construction within the borough. And that's, if you go to the borough website, it'll take you to the borough code.
Yeah, it's 301-1.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In regards to, uh, construction equipment and who monitor, and who monitors construction, this will be a residential, uh, 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 construction project that will be administered by, well, it would be reviewed by and permitted by our construction department and our construction code officials. So if there's any difficulty, uh, they're, they're going to make sure that it matches up to what they're approved for if they are successful in approval this evening. And if you have any difficulty, you call the construction office, and Suzanne or whoever else is manning the office will direct you to the appropriate person, whether it may be the zoning officer, or it might be the construction code official.
Thank you.
Uh, in terms of construction equipment, construction equipment, anybody's allowed to park legally upon the street in Haddon Heights, New Jersey. If they're parking illegally, then, then please feel free to reach out to the police department. If they're blocking your driveway, or are they impeding anything in terms of your safe, best driveway? And absolutely call if they're digging in the street or doing anything that is not already permitted. But no proposed modifications and no construction is being proposed in the street under this application. It's currently all the existing utilities. From what I understand from the application material, and I'm going to ask the applicant's architect, everything is going to come off the existing house.
That's correct.
So you're not going to be digging or doing any construction in the street.
The new parts? Yeah. No, it's going to profession.
And there was a, uh, a question also was, was there a basement in the applicant's architect named Katie? There's just very crawl space. I believe I hit all the questions that you raised.
Just give me a sec.
I'm going to say I did hit all the questions that you raised.
So I, I just, I appreciate all the feedback. I felt it was very important to come here and address my concern as a lifelong resident of Haddon Heights. I want to see Haddon Heights continue to grow. I'll say, we've had our time in Haddon Heights. We want to see young people come in with new families. But it is a change. It is a change, and it's, um, you're telling me it's all legal? I, I needed to put this on the record for you all. So I appreciate you listening to me, appreciate your feedback. Greg, you have anything else?
No.
Have you seen the architectural plans?
No.
So. I get, I get. So, and maybe, maybe, uh, these are the application materials in the architectural plans. The addition is a two and a half story addition. Uh, Mr. White, my understanding that it's, it's actually going, um, how far is it going from the back of the house for the two and a half story addition?
What's the depth?
Depth.
Uh, so one part's 20, so the existing house is kind of in the shape of an L. So at one point, it's 23, and on the other side, it's a little shorter.
23 feet.
23 feet. So it's actually, from what I understand, from looking at this, it's, it's not even going far as back as your family room addition. So I don't know if that helps you in terms of this. So I just want, it, it's going a good portion of the same distance, but it's not going further than your family room addition. Uh, is that correct, Mr. White?
That's correct.
So just trying to give a little bit of perspective.
So can I just have clarification? So you have the plan, and so the family room will not be blocked?
So our addition according to Mr. Black is not going to go past your boundary or to your boundary. It'll be stopping.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
But it will, I just want to. But it will, I just want to be clear here. So it doesn't go back as far as your family room addition goes back, but it'll go back a good, a good portion. So, but it's not bigger than your family room addition in terms of going back. I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
I don't believe that.
I don't, I don't believe it'll go past, looking at the arrow, that first small tree? Yeah, I don't believe it'll go past there, no.
The tree on E T first or twenty-two first?
On the applicant's side.
What's, what's the depth, what's the depth of the house gonna be? With the addition. I'm, I'm looking on Google Earth right now.
So you could stretch a line twenty-three feet off the back wall.
Off the back wall?
That tree looks, is probably about thirty feet.
You're gonna be about forty-eight feet. Yeah, so you'd be about ten feet short of that trail. At first, there's two trees there, it looks like on Google, on the Google. You're basically forty-eight feet deep.
Here, I'll show you. Twenty-three feet already here. I'm sorry. So the existing house is about twenty-five, twenty-three, you said, and then it's twenty-five over the back wall. So that's about where it'll go to? See where that dot is in? That's what I came up with, um, does that look right? Forty-eight feet? I went from the front wall.
Right, so there's the.
It was about twenty-three feet existing.
Thank you.
You're going twenty-five back.
Thank you for clarifying.
Twenty-five, twenty-five to twenty-three, right?
So just one point of clarification, so even though, you know, the potential of very large trucks are sitting outside my home and I have problems pulling on my driveway, I guess I have to call the police then, right?
First, first, if you wanted a point of, 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 resort, that's absolute, you would call the police. Hopefully our, our, our contractors, hopefully the contractors that work on the project won't be parking immediately adjacent to, to your driveway. However, contractors are contractors, we cannot make any guarantee nor could we put that condition on the applicant as long as they're lawfully occupying the roadway. If they are blocking your view, my suggestion is call the police department.
Yeah, call, call, call us, we'll come out. If they're parked illegally, we can have them move, but I can help you back out of driveway.
That's what I would do.
Perfect. You can call us for, if, there's no trucks there, you will help.
Maybe, maybe Ms. Kowalski, hold on, let me offer something else. Maybe Ms. Kowalski could have a conversation with her contractor and rather than get the third party involved.
If you're looking at an absolute point of resort, then it would be the police department. Hopefully it doesn't come to that.
Well, I appreciate the board listening.
And thank you for coming out and asking good questions and paying your attention.
Thanks for coming out, Ms. Peach.
To the applications. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to speak on this application? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Should we give the applicant a chance to respond to any, any of the questions or comments if they'd like to or?
Any additional testimony or?
Do you want to provide any additional testimony?
I think I just want to say that we're excited to join the community and we understand concerns. We understand that there's lifelong residents along our street and are absolutely taking that into consideration through, you know, our application construction and the changes that we're making. And ultimately, we're hoping to be a lifelong resident ourselves. We have two young girls, so looking forward to joining the community.
Any questions or comments from the board members? I think we may be ready for a motion of some sort. Steve did his letter, I think, right? You don't have anything further, Steve, do you?
Nothing further.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the applicant is requesting a few bulk variances for the side yard setback and the aggregate side yard setback. The applicant provided testimony related to multiple pre-existing nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming conditions on the property. I think specifically that the lot is other size and also the configuration of the house provides some difficulties in meeting the ordinances. So the applicant, for a C one variance, must demonstrate that this is a complication with the zoning regulations with a period of hardship or resolved in exceptional practical difficulties by reason of this exceptional shape of the property or the photography. And as indicated, it seems like because of the pre-existing non-efficient and also because of the unique shape of the home, that those do exist there. The applicant was required to go before the historic district commission from the borough and they did approve the application. I also have a copy of that letter too, but I don't think that they really had much in way of argumentation specifically. They did approve the application and the board would simply make a motion and ensure that the applicant agreed with the testimony that they provided today and also the notice in harm.
Does anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application. I believe that the applicant has proven that there is a hardship to this property and that I believe, I don't believe, and there was nothing in, no, there were no further things that Mr. Bock had put into it. So approve the application as is.
Questions or comments on the motion?
Wait, I'm just gonna add one thing, I'm sorry. You asked me a question. The only thing is, in our review letter, that if there's any, this, this is gonna disturb more than five hundred square feet. So a grading plan will be required.
I will amend my motion to include a grading plan or.
A grading plan and, and any of the items in our May eighth letter.
And anything in the May eighth letter, thank you.
Did you also get testimony about the spring garage? Cause that's number two.
They could provide that. We indicated that it's greater than the four hundred fifty square feet. They acknowledge that it's greater than the four hundred fifty square feet, so that.
The square footage is on the, on the draw.
Pre-existing nonconformity?
Thank you, clarification is provided at seven hundred ninety-five square feet. Thank you very much, that's right.
Yep, we'll recognize that as a pre-existing nonconformity.
All right? Dicko, sorry. I'm calling your partner's name the whole night, all guys.
Are you accept the amendment? Or John already said he's good with the amendment that Steve put forth. You're good with it too, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions or comments on the motion? Carry it on, roll call, Suzanne.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Motion's approved. You heard the spiel about the appeal period. I'm not gonna go through that four more times this evening, but that applies to your case as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
I'm sorry for you. I actually called you Mr. Bock several times, which is a combination of yours and your partner's.
No worries.
All right, thank you, good seeing you.
Thanks, Mr. Bock, you too. Yeah, I said the appeal, I gave it after the first case. I said this, I said, everybody listen up, this applies to everything this evening. I'm not doing it five times tonight, six times, even better. I gave the disclaimer. Next case, case number twenty-five dash five dash four P, Joel Thorp, fourteen fourteen Oak Avenue, block one oh eight, lot four. And this is for an addition. Good evening, Mr. Thorp, how you doing?
Spectacular, you guys.
We're gonna have our solicitor swear in here.
You raise your hand, you swear or affirm that you're about to provide a dispute of the street.
I do.
Would this be a case where it would be most beneficial to have our engineer go through his review letter to?
With your permission, thank you very much.
Absolutely, go ahead, Suzanne. Thank you.
And with the applicant's permission also, the application before us this evening is for a bulk variance approval. Construct a second for a second story addition and a sixty-three square foot one story addition to an existing one and a half story dwelling located at the southern side of Oak Avenue between Glenside Avenue and Baltimore Avenue. The, I refer the board and the applicant to our May seventh review, specifically page two, which calls out the bulk standards that we're currently have for the R five residential zone. We have an existing non-conformance for maximum lot coverage where thirty percent maximum coverage is permitted by the ordinance. The existing addition is forty-seven point two, proposed is forty-seven point zero. So we can recognize that as an existing addition. In terms of setbacks, there's an existing non-conformance of the front yard setback, twenty-five feet minimums required by the ordinance. Eight point nine feet exists. The applicant's proposed second story addition or addition over, proposed addition is gonna be thirteen point five eight feet, less than the eighteen, eight point, uh, greater than the eight point nine, but still less than required twenty-five foot setback. The other items that we're indicating in our bulk, uh, bulk analysis chart, for lack of a better term, are all existing additions in terms of non-conformities. They consist of really the garage or the outbuilding, two point four eight side yard setback exists where five feet is required and a rear, two point seven three feet rear yard exists where five feet is required. Uh, in our review comments, we indicated that any proposed downstairs should be directed away from adjacent properties. Is that acceptable? I do not believe there will be any disturbance more than five hundred square feet here. In essence, going up over the existing building and know their site improvements are being proposed?
Nope.
Right, so a grading plan would not be required. In essence, that's what the application is before us this evening.
I just want to let the record reflect it. Mr. Madden joined us and you heard all of the testimony given so far on this case. Okay. Any questions for the applicant or Steve from the board?
So I'm gonna ask the applicant, so you currently have, the home is where it is. You're not building the first, your home, you're adding a second floor addition. It would be a practical difficulty for you to build the addition where your existing house is eight point nine feet off of the front, your front property line. If you tried to build an addition twenty-five feet away and be conformance with the ordinance for the front yard, it'd be a practical difficulty because you're not lining up your second story with your first story. In other words.
Correct.
You, you would be trying to build an addition that's set much further back than the front face of your existing house. So that is the practical difficulty that the applicant is challenged with as part of the application.
Any questions for Mr. Bock or the applicant?
I can see why you need the verb.
Seeing no more questions or comments for the applicant, Mr. Bock will open this case up for comment from the public. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this matter, come forward, we'll have you sworn in. Seeing none, we'll close public. Bring back to the board for possible motion.
I believe Mr. Bock has a bulk C variance for the front yard setback. The applicant provided the testimony that there are some pre-existing non-conforming conditions on the property. Specifically, it would be impractical to build an addition to meet the ordinance because it would not line up. So for C one variance, applicant most demonstrated district application of the zoning regulations with a clause of hardship, which I think the applicant did provide testimony that that would be a hardship. So the board could, could vote to approve the application so that the applicant would agree with any comments from our engineer's letter dated May seventh.
Does anybody like to make a motion to approve or disapprove the application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application on, based on a C one variance that the misalignment of the, you know, the extreme interpretation of our zoning laws would create a misalignment of the first and second floor. And that the hardship is why I've made the motion. And that is for the front yard setback as well as all the pre-existing non-conformities.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call, Suzanne, please.
Ms. Bonacorsi? Mr. Madden?
Yes.
Chairman Hansen?
Yes.
Mr. Shannon? Mayor Howe?
Yes.
Councilwoman Howard? Mr. Famular?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Christie?
Yes.
And Ms. Borcher.
Congratulations, project's approved, good luck. You heard the Gettysburg Address about the appeal period earlier, correct? So.
Correct.
That applies to this case, obviously, probably pretty unlikely, seeing that nobody came out to ask any questions, but I just put it out there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sorry I had to wait.
Thank you for your patience.
Note, everybody's got, I'm not a thing to remember, so, but my daughter is thirty, thirty-five now. When you used to go to Sears or JCPenney's or any place, you used to have the video cameras lined up and put them on all the TVs. So I remember my daughter at five years old, seeing herself on camera and going to all the TVs and moving around, so it's very cute. They don't, they don't have the video cameras.
That was like, that was the highlight of any trip to the mall when you were. Case number twenty-five dash five P, that's Chad and Brittany Davino, eighteen thirty-three Maple Avenue, block one fifty-one, lot thirteen, for a workshop slash storage use. Before, we'll have the solicitors swear in and go through the application.
Chad and Brittany Davino.
Chad, you raise your hand, you swear or affirm that you're about to provide a dispute of the street.
Yes.
Steve, you think it's another one where you want to go through your letter?
With the applicant and the chair's permission, I'll refer the board and the applicant to our May ninth, twenty twenty-five review. The applicant is requesting a bulk variance approval to demolish an existing two hundred and five square foot garage and construct a four hundred and fifty square foot detached workshop slash garage on a residential property located on the northern side of Maple Avenue between St. Martin's and Havreford Avenue. The property is a six thousand two hundred and fifty square foot lot with a minimum lot width of fifty feet, which are both conforming. The applicant is here for two items. One, a maximum lot coverage variance, thirty, thirty percent maximum coverage is permitted in the R five residential zone. Existing is forty-seven point six percent, from which I understand the applicant already received a variance for that lot coverage. The applicant is in for a lot coverage of fifty-one point six percent, which would require the variances. The other variances, I believe, were already noted in the previous resolution, but it can't hurt to reference them in any subsequent resolutions if it's successful this evening. Minimum front yard setback seventeen feet exists where twenty-five feet is required in the zone. Side yard on the principal structure, six point one two exists, eight feet is required in the zone. And the other variance that is being proposed is a two foot setback from the side yard where five feet is required under the ordinance. And that's where the side yard adjacent to.
Yes.
Eighteen thirty-five or eighteen thirty-seven?
Side yard adjacent to, I don't have that in front of me, what that lot number is.
Eighteen thirty-seven.
Oh, you want, oh, I don't have that.
Adjacent to the, uh, two feet from the adjacent property.
Either thirteen point. It's to the left or to the right?
It's left, looking at the house to the left.
Thirteen point one oh.
Thirteen point one zero, thirteen point zero one. Perfect. The applicant is, and I'm gonna ask the applicant a few questions if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
So the applicant was originally, and while the applicant is proposing rain barrels right near at the rear of the property, we noted in our review comment that unfortunately, the rain barrels do not meet the calculated volume for the water quality storm. And if you recall, our recommendation has always been for anything that is exceeding the new impermeas for it to capture at least a water quality storm, which is the least frequency storm as calculated by the DEPA. Which is the least frequency storm um as calculated by the DEP. I know you had an opportunity to speak with, I believe it was Karen Weiss in my office. What is currently your proposal for how to handle additional runoff from the proposed increase of impervious?
So the, the first plan was to install four rain barrels at the end of each downspout, the fifty gallon rain barrels. Um, after speaking with Karen, she said that I, I guess with the stormwater collection, that wouldn't be sufficient enough.
Two, two.
Sorry, two.
Two. Um. We would like to propose using four to hit the calculated percentages.
But the four, that would be almost immediately adjacent to the property line. So the rain barrels, you know, the rain barrels are only for the water quality storm. So anything over the water quality storm would immediately go over your property line or to your adjacent neighbors. So it kind of defeats of, kind of defeats the purpose.
Yeah, so she recommended the recharge trench on the right side of the new proposed garage. Um, and we're fine with that, you know, I, I installed it myself the first time, uh, so I know how to do it. And it was a lot of digging, so I did it myself. Um.
So what, and if I may, so what that was, uh, when the applicant was here previously uh for their, their former successful application. Uh, they had a uh, uh, a recharge trench that was installed exactly for that, for the water quality storm, for the uh impervious coverage variance that they received before. This would be a smaller version uh to the interior uh of their proposed uh garage workshop. Meaning not on the uh side yard and not against the rear yard, but on the interior. So anything that the recharge trench cannot accommodate would naturally just go into the rest of their yard. And I believe that's an, my opinion is that's an appropriate mitigation for the additional impervious that they're proposing here. Uh, uh, for their uh proposed outbuilding.
You're amenable to that? I'm sorry? You're amenable to that? Yes.
Yeah. Uh, other comments are that they would uh direct uh any downspouts to the interior of the property and away from adjacent properties. Again, for the same rational reason. Um, and. The other thing, there's a grading comment uh where there's a note that we need some clarification from you or uh in terms of uh the existing grade to be held in the area between the back of the garage and the property line. So our, is, is there any, we just don't want a flat area, so we want to make sure that it's, you're not going to create some potting. So that's something that you could work out, would you agree to work that out, just having a representation that it's not going to be completely flat or low-lying area?
Right.
So there's no potting, mosquitoes, that type of stuff. Um, and then we recommend cell fence along the southwestern property line uh from the end of the driveway. Um, uh, to the northwestland property corner and along the entirety of the northwestland property line. So in other words, any area of your yard during construction that be draining onto adjacent property. You would put the cell fence just to hold back the cell.
Yes.
Uh, and this is your testimony, so that's, that's the facts of the application. The one add thing I would ask that the applicant provide to the board is uh your testimony in terms of justification as to the five-foot. Why the five-foot uh side yard setback for the outbuilding cannot be maintained as compared to what is being proposed, which is two feet. And I'll leave to you.
Yeah, so we had a garage approved before for variances that we had before. We had an original side setback for two feet. Um, we have two younger children and we still want part of the yard, so that's why we're trying to just push it into the corner as close as we can. Um, we've already spoke to our neighbors next door and they're fine with it and as well as the neighbors behind us as well. Um, so just to kind of like optimize as much yard space as we can left over for installing this, this new garage, so.
Question that I have is a follow-up, uh, what will be the ground surface of the two-foot? Cause typically the five-yard setback is to allow for maintenance of these outbuildings. How are you going to maintain that two-foot area between the property line and your garage?
So before we did like a rock, just like a corrugated rock before on that one side where the existing garage is currently, um, I can, we can do whatever, um, whatever is.
Well, it's your, it's your proposal, it's your application.
Um, I mean, I was going to just do concrete all the way to the edge of it, to the edge of the fence line, our property line. But if, if that's not feasible or if that's not like in the works, then we can do whatever on that side.
Stone, wood chips.
Stone or wood chips, some.
Drain and easy to maintenance.
So concrete, you would increase your impervious, so I would not recommend that. But it sounds to me you're looking for a maintenance-free surface and not vegetation like a river rock.
Yes.
Yes.
And a river rock would not be considered, uh, I would say that we could allow the river rock in that area. Uh, cause that is not considered impervious by the NJDEP. Um, and I think if we can note this in the resolution. That even though it's being requested at fifty one point six percent, the, an area of the uh, cause that's lot coverage, it's not impervious. But. Or the calculation as amended for the area of river rock between the proposed garage and the property line. It's probably going to be less than a percent, but I don't have a calculation for it.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
So right now it's fifty one point six percent lot coverage. It, we just talked about adding river rock for that two-foot by.
Twenty-two and a half feet.
By twenty-two and a half. Mr. Schmidt, you want to help me with some math?
That's forty-five square feet, what's the lot size?
Six-two-five-zero.
You're looking at what, point seven percent? You ever take?
You're saying that that would add to the impervious?
To the lot coverage.
Because even though it's not determined, it's not considered impervious.
Our definition is lot coverage.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Yes.
But I do believe it's appropriate to have a non-vegetative material there if, if the board is.
We just won't consider it new impervious for the purposes of the rain barrel calculation.
Correct, correct.
You're saying it would increase the maximum lot coverage to like fifty-two?
No, I'll do it.
Hold on, what is it, point four, we said forty-five square feet and it was what? I think it's like point seven percent. Forty-five divided by sixty-two fifty?
Yes.
Point seven-two percent, seven, point seven-two percent.
Yeah. Yeah, point seven-two.
And that would be added to the existing fifty-one point six.
Uh, to whatever the proposed is, right?
Yeah, okay.
So it would be fifty-one point six plus point seven, so say fifty-two point four.
Uh, so it's fifty-two point.
Or to be safe.
Fifty-two point four.
Okay.
Percent. But that's not going to increase any calculation for the stormwater purposes.
Just for the variance calculation.
But also, and that, that takes care of my, that was the only concern I really had concerning maintenance.
It's not like you're going to be able to get a lawnmower back in a two-foot.
No.
You got to go there.
A ladder's going there.
Weed whacker and all that.
Anybody?
Cause theoretically, the neighbor could put a fence up in between there, correct?
Correct, that's what you always look for is what happens in the future.
I need to try this out more, but we, the applicant provide a little more testimony about um whether they're requesting the variance because of a hardship. Or because of some particular conditions of the property or um potentially a C two, like flexible C variance. Um, so you have to provide legal criteria for you to the C one or the C two. As you've heard tonight, most of the applicants decide on C one, this is a particular condition of the property. So you could just provide a little more information about which of the standards you would qualify that's why you're requesting the variance.
Um, I think I would feel comfortable saying that our lot is smaller, we're narrow. We are looking to put the garage in the corner so as to have usage of the space. And that it would, you know, fit very nicely and look aesthetically pleasing with the confines of our narrow yard.
Are you, uh, as far as the impervious coverage variance goes, you have your garage in the rear of the house. Which achieves the goal of having cars parked behind the uh house line, so that would increase your impervious coverage.
So if I could assess, if I may.
Yeah.
So right now they have an, they have their driveway, which does extend to the back of their home. So they do have the ability to park cars, not from the, the building face forward or the front of your house to the street. You can park there, but you have enough room that you could park from the building face to the rear.
Our cars are hidden, our cars are back, they're not on the front.
Uh, in terms of aesthetics, uh, typically, uh, even though the driveway is not going to this workshop garage. Cause it's not being proposed for actually for housing vehicles. But in terms of aesthetics, it is going to what our master plan has indicated that garages toward the rear and the back of the property. So aesthetically, driving down the street, it would be one of those goals and objectives of our master plan of having detached garages. Behind the main structure, so it actually would advance that purpose.
That's what I was getting at, you.
Okay.
But it wasn't connected by a driveway, that's what I wanted to get to, it's, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No, you're right, just don't apologize when you're right, Steve.
You, uh, this is, it's being called a workshop, is this, is it going, what is going to be consistent in this, it's?
Yeah, so I, I do carpentry on the side and I want a big enough space where I can work in and also house our children's stuff. You know, over the years, our kids have began older and more stuff has been accumulating as far as bikes and golf clubs and sporting equipment and things like that. So it's kind of double down garage slash kind of space where I can.
But this is personal, this is not a commercial use?
No, not a commercial, just all personal stuff.
Cars are not going in.
And it's not going to be a car driven in, um, I do like carpet, like woodworking I do.
Personal use.
I produce it for personal use, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
So any noise levels or any equipment would be consistent with that of, of residential personal use?
Correct.
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, we'll open this application to the public. Anybody who wants to speak on this application, come forward, we'll have you sworn in. Seeing none, we'll close public, bring back to the lane for a possible move.
The applicant is requesting, um, bulk fair, it's approval for a four hundred and fifty square foot detached um garage. They have um some pre-existing uh non-conforming conditions on the property. And we'll note that the lot size um does conform, but the applicant provided testimony that um it's a more narrow lot. Um, they're looking to put the garage in order to maximize space, um, ensure it's aesthetically pleasing, to use as much space of the garden as possible for their children. Um, they did agree to have um some river stone um in that two, I think two feet space. Um, in order to have it be low maintenance. Um, so the applicant, um, in order to grant approval, they have to determine that, um, the applicant demonstrated that the strict application of zoning regulations would create a hardship. Or is on some exceptional practical difficulty, various of the exceptional shape of the property. And as mentioned, um, the applicant has said that it's more of a narrow lot. Um, and so the board could make a motion to um approve the application, especially if the changes, um, that they were going to add river rock. And that they would also um meet the uh conditions of our engineer's letter dated May ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So the only other question, I know you have provided grading, did you actually um submit a grading application?
Yes.
So you did a grading plan application?
Yes.
And then conditioned upon any grading plan application approval?
Yes.
I think you did also, I just don't know.
Yes, I believe I submitted to Karen.
Okay.
Yes.
But they just.
Yes, and to Suzanne as well.
Anyone care to make a motion?
What was the um, the C variance? Who you were going with?
The C one.
C one. That area. Uh, I'll make a motion. Put the application, pre-existing non-conforming uh variance is needed as well as uh conforming with the letter dated May ninth. Mr. Bach, um, all the stipulations are met and based on a C one variance, considering that the yard is though conforming. And with um and square footage, uh, the current configuration of the buildings that exist along the property would uh. Strict enforcement of it would basically would be a hardship in sense of making it a usable yard or. That's placed?
Works for me. Would anyone like to second the motion? Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, roll call Suzanne.
This one's for, yes, this is Adam.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
No, no, no. I'm just processing.
Come back for a question?
Yes.
Motion passes, project's approved, good luck, you heard the, uh, you've been through before, I'm sure you heard the appeal period, uh.
Four to five days, after the thirty day.
After the publication of the notice of the decision in the newspaper.
Yes.
Pretty unlikely, considering nobody's here to even ask you questions, but I'll put it out there.
Thank you guys, have a good night, appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for your patience.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Hopefully we won't have another one until the next pandemic, whenever that is. Hopefully there's not another one. Uh, our last case this evening, case number twenty-five dash five dash six P, Ryan Cunningham, fifteen thirteen. Maple Avenue, block one hundred, lot twenty for an addition. Sure, he's very uh thrilled to hear that this was our longest meeting. All right, Mr. Cunningham, we'll have our solicitors very in and then probably just have Mr. Bach with his review letter.
Do you want to raise your hand? You swear or affirm the testimony or about providing the truth and the evidence?
Yes.
And please give me one.
What is it?
I plugged mine in when I was accused.
You're true.
What size case?
No, I don't think so, it's okay, I can handwrite, I can handwrite my notes.
You have one of those?
Well, I don't think so, it's round.
You can take my computer.
No, no.
Right?
I can handwrite.
I'll leave and you can use mine.
Not getting out that easy.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, with permission of the applicant, we refer the board to our May seventh, twenty twenty-five review. The applicant is proposing um and requesting variances for approval to construct a covered front porch. And a second story addition to an existing one-story dwelling located on the northernly side of Maple Avenue between Devon and Clenside Avenues. Um, the existing property, and I refer the board and the applicant to our page two of our review. Uh, the properties in the R five residential zone, minimum lot size required is six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, it does comply in terms of lot size, minimum lot width, fifty square feet, uh, is required, fifty uh square feet um is existing. Uh, the uh proposed uh application would require a maximum lot coverage variance. Uh, thirty-three point nine-five percent is being proposed, thirty percent is existing, I'm sorry, thirty percent is the maximum required by ordinance. And thirty-one point nine-five feet is existing. In terms of the front yard setbacks, uh, the applicant is with the new front porch. The applicant is proposing a twenty point seven foot front yard setback and that's really to the front porch. Um, and then the existing um, uh, base of the uh frontage of existing front facade of the structure is twenty-four point seven. Which would be in essence a setback for the second story addition. Uh, the existing side yard, uh, a minimum, one side yard has a six, six-foot dimension. It's being proposed for the second story to stay with that six foot, uh, where eight feet is required in our ordinance. And the same similar uh, uh, occurrence will happen on our side aggregate. Uh, two side yard aggregate, twenty feet is required for both side yards together, seventeen point seven feet is existing. And seventeen point seven feet will be proposed, and again, that's for the second story going up. Uh, so the, the applicant is here for the variances for uh, uh, new variances, minimum lock or maximum lock coverage. Front yard, side yard and side aggregate as being. coverage, front yard, side yard, and side aggregate as being for the proposed variances. We do have a few review cover of comments. Any proposed downsouts will be directed away from adjacent properties. The, it is noted that the proposed improvements will not result in more than 500 square feet of disturbance. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And that also the 128 square feet, in our opinion, is negligible in terms of increase of stormwater runoff generated for the water quality storm. However, as a mitigating factor, would the applicant be amenable to use of a rain barrel or other similar storage unit?
Yes.
From one of the downsouts?
Yeah.
And that would be a mitigating factor for the 128 square foot. Again, nominal amount, but I believe that would be a mitigating factor. If the applicants can speak to why they would like a front porch, which is creating a good amount of the variances, and also why they want to build on top of the existing footprint of their existing home.
Sure. Yeah, so right now, the second floor of our home, there's two existing bedrooms. My daughter was born five days ago, so we need another bedroom upstairs so we can have all the kids on one floor. As I said, the second story addition would be able to accommodate the additional bedroom on the second story. And the front porch is for two purposes, three if you include aesthetics and looking aesthetically pleasing. The way our property is positioned and where our primary family room is, basically for the bulk of the day, the sun is just blasting in there and have trouble heating the home because of that. And so it would help with the shade coverage for there. That's the primary purpose for the porch, to provide some sun relief effectively.
And some outs, and some outdoor area.
Yes, yes.
It appears that your property, when looking at your home to the right, which I believe is Lot 21, they have an existing porch on their home?
Correct.
And their existing porch actually, and their home is slightly closer to the roadway than yours?
Yes, yes.
And their porch would be, even after your new porch addition, their porch would still be closer to the roadway than yours?
Yes, correct.
The one and a half story addition, it would be one full story. What is in the half story? What is that space in the underneath the roof cable?
That would just be non-used space effectively. You talk about basically like.
From your second story ceiling to the peak of your roof? Is that going to be attic space?
No, no, I think it's too small. So that would probably just unused space.
So it'd be, it would be unoccupied attic space?
Correct, yes.
Unoccupied attic space, but it wouldn't be occupied for any living purposes?
No.
And the practical difficulty of why you want to build on top of your existing home? Because you really would only be able to, you'd be building over half your house if you had to meet the requirements of.
Correct.
Of our ordinance requirements. So unique part, your site is unique because of where your home is currently set on the property. Even though it's a conforming lot, this is where your home is set. In order to do a second story addition, that would occur. And then also where your home is set in order to do a front porch, again, with is also occurred aesthetically in terms of some of the master plan discussions. You would require that variance. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Bach or the applicant?
Ironically, I'm just saying to Madam that in 2008, this house had a deck on the front of it that probably came out. Based on Google Street View. Gone by 13.
Usually the reverse.
Usually things show up, not.
It wasn't an addition. Let that get taken off.
Yeah.
So I have nothing further.
Anyone else? We're not going to open it to the public because there's nobody here besides the board and the applicant at this point. Anybody got a potential motion for us?
Yes, the applicant requests a both variance to construct a covered front porch and second story addition. The property has some pre-existing non-conforming conditions, specifically the, I guess mostly they're requesting variances for conditions that are already pre-existing non-conforming. But I think more so specifically, some maximum lot coverage is going to increase by about 3%. And the applicant provided testimony about why they wanted the porch and also the addition. Addition to have the, help applicant's children on one floor, and also that the porch would provide some relief from the sun and provide some shade coverage. So in addition, the property has, is a little bit unique because of where the house is, had its position. And so the board could approve the application for a C1 variance, where the applicant would demonstrate a strict application of his own regulations. Would create a hardship or result in exceptional practical difficulties, especially because of the shape of the home. And the applicant agreed to some of the conditions in our engineer's letter dated May 7.
And it would be new variances for the second floor? So would be, no, they mirror the existing non-conformances.
Yeah, yeah. And just to be specific, it's the variances for the lot coverage, for air setback, side yards.
Thank you.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Don't rush us out of here, anybody.
I will make a motion to accept the application. I believe the applicant has shown a hardship, that there is a hardship based in the placement of the house. And do we have to follow, there's nothing in your letter, correct? That's, is there anything, any stipulations that?
I was just saying, anything that's dated our May 7.
And following the stipulations in the May 7 Bach letter.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, roll call Suzanne.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Congratulations, you're approved. You heard the spiel about the appeal period applies. I think you said you just had a newborn five days ago. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're probably getting a lot more peace at this meeting than your significant others getting you home. And maybe that's why, that's probably why I wasn't too upset that the meeting was dragging on. You can stay, we'll drag it on for another minute now.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, we got one other thing, and then under correspondence, other business. We got a letter from Leah Fury Bruder, who's our redevelopment planner, and this is related to that Ivy Group LP property, the old bank up on White Horse Pike. And I'm just going to read the letter, and then we'll do a resolution to accept the minor change. It's going to go from a moderate income unit to a low-income unit, moderate to low-income unit, I believe. But here's the letter, any rate, May 13, 2025, addressed to the planning board and Suzanne regarding Ivy Group, or Ivy Property Group LP, 322 to 324 White Horse Pike, Block 36, lots 10 and 11. Dear Chairman and members of the board, we have received the May 13, 2025 letter submitted by Ivy Property Group requesting a revision to its approval memorialized by Resolution 24, excuse me, 2024 233, related to the affordable housing unit to be included in the redevelopment project. Redevelopment plan for 322 to 324 White Horse Pike provides in section I1 on page 11 that the first required affordable unit will be a two-bedroom moderate income unit. The applicant's agreement to comply with this requirement is affirmed in the last whereas on page seven of the resolution of approval. Standard was articulated in the redevelopment plan in order to give the applicant the benefit of a moderate income unit in the first phase of the project with the intent of supporting pride, project viability. The implication was that if the applicant proposed a future phase of development, the next required affordable unit would be a low-income unit. The applicant now proposes making the first affordable unit a two-bedroom low-income unit since this essentially exceeds the minimum requirement of the redevelopment plan and since it will be balanced by a future moderate income unit if and when a second phase is proposed. There does, there do not appear to be any detriments resulting from this request. The applicant requests that the planning board authorize this revision so that the record is clear that the intent is for the first required affordable unit to be a two-bedroom low-income unit. The borough's administrative agent will ensure that the deed restriction is properly recorded and that the unit is administrated as a low-income unit. Please email me with any questions. Leah Fury Bruder, PP, AICP, Haddon Heights Borough redevelopment planner. So I guess the appropriate step would be for us to make a motion to either, I guess, amend our resolution or to accept it. Maybe we should just do a separate resolution to accept the change. What do you think the proper course is here?
Yeah.
I'm waiting on you guys for this.
I think it's the simplest thing because it is exceeding the requirements already of the previously approved, voted on, approved at public hearing vote and the memorializing resolution. I think this exceeds any requirements. I think the planning board, and I looked at everybody, can just accept and acknowledge and have no objection to the contents of Ms. Bruder's letter.
Okay.
Might I add?
Yeah.
The borough is under, what I entered as mayor, we have, we've been working closely with revising our affordable housing plan since 2020 when we hired Leah and Flat to help us navigate some concerns from the fair share. One of the challenges in a town like Haddon Heights, where we're fully, almost fully developed now, very little vacant land, which ironically is what we're running with the made land. And one of them's a low-lying area, although it's ironic, it's got to be affordable. But the point being is that we have, it's very hard for us to get two-bedroom pound units, especially two-bedroom units. That is why from the borough and Mayor Council's perspective, we are in favor of this and supportive of this in most of the filings.
It's going to help us with our obligation.
Yes. Which, like I said, I would say is we were, we are not fully out of the clear, but we are doing better than we were anyway. In the situation of what our plan is, getting it all locked down.
I think the resolution or the motion could be to accept the right, to accept and acknowledge that the affordable housing unit on Phase 1 of the Ivy Property Group would exceed the requirements of the approval, of the previous approval, and having no objection to the first affordable unit being a low, low-income affordable housing unit.
Does anybody want to make that motion?
One claim would be if Phase 2, if Phase 2 and Phase 1 were cut together, the outcome is the same?
I would actually add to the resolution saying with the, and also it is, you would have no objection that Phase 2 would have, in lieu of the low-income affordable housing unit, Phase 2 would have the moderate.
It's good they're going to come back to Phase 2 anyway.
Yeah, but you're, you're doing this for your affordable housing planner and for Triad, and so they know when they come in. Well, just let's keep it the same.
Keep it as, I just leave Phase 2 out.
Leave Phase 2 out of it because it doesn't exist right now.
Wouldn't represent.
To be clear, this, it was only, they're only proposing one affordable unit.
Correct.
Okay, so they, if they do have a Phase 2, it might be low, low income in the first phase, but in Phase 2, it might switch to moderate. That's what they're proposing.
Correct.
So maybe, because I think it's five units. The unit that we have, the building that we have, Phase 1, with here, the council. Five units requires one to be affordable.
Yeah.
Negotiation. There was, there's, without disclosing negotiations, because Phase 2 is still out there, but it is if there is a. It would, the total, the total count would require them to provide additional units, of which the applicant, in those negotiations, there were low units.
Mayor, won't there be a modification to the redevelopment plan for Phase 2?
It's, it would be actually be a separate redevelopment plan.
Yeah, so.
Phase 2 potentially has a separate owner.
Yeah, I would keep that all separate. All we have right now before us is the Ivy Property Group development and the redevelopment plan that guides that. So I think it would just be a resolution of no objection is changing from moderate to low income, moderate to low because it exceeds the requirements of your, your previous approvals. Keep it clean.
Yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept and acknowledge the letter with no objection because it exceeds previous approvals.
Thanks.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, roll call Suzanne, please.
Yes.
Bobby Chen?
Yes.
Will Chris Smith? Also on the ground? Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. My discretion, we're not going to discuss the sign ordinance this evening, but if anybody else has any other matters.
Do you used to have a hard stop? Remember, we had two sets of go.
Oh, they went bananas.
He had hard stops, and we could avoid it. We're going to take this in case. We would go again at 10. And there's always, because it's soon.
Yeah.
Could use next month, two cases? For the Housing Element Fair Share Plan?
Yeah, she's coming in like we already discussed before, her first on the agenda. What kind of cases we got? Routine emergencies, I hope.
Two additions, four.
No use, sir.
Yeah, let's make, let's make a motion to adjourn. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Please.
Thank you, Brian. All favor, aye.
Nice motion.
All right. Good work. Everybody still got all their fingers and toes? I might not be here on June.
Is the borough open?
Oh.
Who else will not be there in the June meeting?
What's the date?
You won't be here? Anyone else?
June what?
19.
I'll be here.
I work. I work with my.
The 19th usher fills.
Do we know if Dean will be here? I hope so. I just hope we have a forum for the, the Housing Element Fair Share Plan has to be heard at some point in June.
Yes.